Well, thank you STL TV and welcome back all the members of the board. We have a, we're gonna have a pretty busy time between now and the end of the year. I also want to thank you all for all the work that you did when we were out of session. Because I heard from a lot of you about things that you're working on in your ward. So I want to just make sure to tell you all thanks, thank you for that. The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Present.
Alderman Calder. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alderwoman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Collins Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Combe. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Calder.
Alderman Bosley is present.
Thank you. Alderman Calder. Alderman Gunther. Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Combe. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-three, present, you have quorum.
Present, present.
Got it, thank you. Twenty-four, present, you have quorum.
All right, thank you. Quorum being present, we will be led today, today in prayer by our very own John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple. Reverend Watson, where in your hand?
God bless each of you. Before we get started, I wanted to personally say thank you for the representation sent by the Board of Aldermen to the celebration of my saintly mother's passing in her celebration service. President, I want to say that your heartfelt words encouraged the family. And with Shemaine, Alderwoman Shemaine, Alderman Todd, and Ms. Tracy, they were there to represent the board. And I want to say to the board, thank you for the proclamation that has memorialized my, my mother with the city of St. Louis forever. I also want to say that if you all remember, she was in the meeting and she sang her song, "Husai Yalini" you know, that has been memorialized also in the archives of the city of St. Louis. But again, we just want to say thank you and our family was encouraged. So thank you again, President, and the Board of Aldermen, all of you that helped in the community to help celebrate the homegrown of my saintly mother. So I want to say thank you again.
Welcome, thank you.
With that said, would you bow your head those that will join us? I want to quote from the Holy Scriptures, "He that dwelleth in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of the Almighty." The gracious God heavenly Father, may thank you for this time of prayer that you allow us to come to speak to you as a community. On today, as we again assemble and take on the responsibilities committed to our care in governing this great city, we look from the sane to the unsane, from the temporal to the eternal. And in so doing, regain courage and wisdom for this hour and strength for the days ahead. And your presence may receive the resources that makes us suitable for our duties, that gives us steadfast devotion for what is right and keep us dedicated to the purpose of servicing all our citizens. As the road ahead may be full of challenges, may we embrace your eternal truth and may we be determined here and now to walk with you in rebuilding this city where righteousness, justice, and peace prevail forever. Amen.
Amen. Let's give John Watson, Reverend John Watson Jr. a big round of applause and thank you and welcome back.
God bless you.
We appreciate you so much. You volunteered and led us in prayer for so many years. I cannot thank you enough for doing that and taking out your mornings every Friday to do that. And, and also, you know, making yourself available anytime we need any spiritual guidance.
I just want to add to that really quick, that was my mother in me. She won't, she wouldn't stop praying.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it and thank, and so thankful for that. We will, we will dispense with line item three, introduction of our honored guest, Alderman from the twenty-third. Yes, as always, I would like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest. Thank you. All right, welcome Greg. Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the fourth.
Yes, I'd like to have Thomasina Clark, who did the production of Shakespeare in the Streets this past week. And I'd like to honor her as my special guest, Thomasina Clark.
Clark. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm unmuted now. I wanted to echo congratulations to Thomasina Clark.
You're muted again. There you go. You, oh, now your video and everything's gone.
Oh, gosh.
There you go, start over.
What's going on with my stuff today? Am I muted now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, there was a lot of things going on just then. I wanted to also congratulate Thomasina for being steadfast in the arts community for so many years. It is her passion, it is her love, and she's good at it. And I, I thank her for all the young people that she has nurtured, including my son when he was at the Black Rep. And I'm hoping that we, the city of St. Louis, as we are looking at ways to improve the culture of our communities, bring that type of experiences more often to our communities. And so I also would like to have as my special guest, the entire nineteenth ward that is currently watching this video. I didn't realize how many residents watch it every Friday, but I've been on my little circuit of going to adult daycares and talking to people sitting down in their yards and all that. They watch us. So I just want to say, good morning and thank you.
Welcome nineteenth ward residents. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my special guest our former chief clerk and chief counsel of the Board of Aldermen, Mr. David Sweeney, and the vice president of government relations for Spire, Ms. Emily Romano. And to my colleague in the twenty-third, Greg is our special guest, not just yours.
Hi Emily.
All right, any, any further introductions, any further introductions? Approval of minutes.
Approval of the minute stated Monday, August thirtieth, 2021.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
I move for approval of this from August thirtieth, 2021.
Move by all. I moved by all from the tenth second and by all from the twenty-second and someone else did I miss? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 O's. Motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has the consent of Alderman's mailbox.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our formal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our formal calendars? Alderwoman from the, she was there. Alder. Wait a minute. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to take board bill forty off of the board bill for perfection and formal calendar, please. Place it on the regular perfection calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. You're welcome. Place board bill forty at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
I'll note it.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our formal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our formal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board bill eighty-nine sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance amended ordinance six, eight, five, three, six to permit drink license holders to sell intoxicating beverages not in their original package for consumption on or off the license premises and the extension of Sunday hours of sale to correspond to any other, to any other day of the week from six AM to one thirty AM. Board bill ninety sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance amended section twenty-four of ordinance number five, nine, nine, seven, nine codified in chapter twenty-six point nine-two of the revised code of city of St. Louis relating to public notice of hearing by planning commission on making a change in the boundary of a zoning district map requiring the planning commission to publish, publish such notice of such hearings as provided herein. This ordinance has an effective date. Board bill ninety-one sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance amended ordinance number six, four, nine, six, four, one, nine, five codified section two, six, eight, four, zero, five, zero of the revised code of the city of St. Louis relating to the board of adjustment, adjustment requiring consideration of variance to be, to be in keeping with the city's adopted comprehensive plan. This ordinance has an effective date. Board bill ninety-two sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance amended ordinance number six, four, six, eight, seven codified in chapter three point four eight of the rise code of the city of St. Louis relating to the planning commission amended section three point four eight point zero, seven, zero subsection D specifying the vote, the vote required by the Board of Aldermen to override a negative recommendation of the planning commission for a zoning change. This ordinance has an effective date. Board bill ninety-three sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended by the planning commission on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J industrial district to K unrestricted district to the H area commercial district and city block two, two, one, two, and two, two, one, three, so as to include the described parts of the land in city block two, two, one, two, and two, two, one, three, and contain that emergency clause. Board bill ninety-four sponsored by Alderwoman Schweitzer and ordinance establishing a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Bates Street and Leona Street regulating all traffic traveling westbound and eastbound on Bates Street at the intersection of Bates Street and Leona, Leona Street. Board bill ninety-five sponsored by Alderman Calder, this ordinance establishes, established the transparency, ethics, and accountability in City Hall Teach Act. Board bill ninety-seven, ninety-six, number not used this session. Board bill ninety-seven sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated August fourth, twenty twenty-one for the forty-nine hundred through forty-nine fourteen, Graboy Avenue and forty-six twenty-two, forty, I'm sorry, forty-two sixty, sixty-six, Delores Street area. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, board bill eighty-nine, to the Hoods Committee, board bill ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, and ninety-three, to Legislation Committee, board bill ninety-five, to Neighborhood Development, board bill ninety-seven, and to the Streets Committee, board bill ninety-four. That is the extent of reference for committee.
We'll dispense with line items thirteen through seventeen. Wait a minute, thirteen through fifteen.
Um, perfection, because we have none for perfection consent.
Yeah, I said, we're gonna dispense with thirteen through fifteen. And board bills for perfection.
Board bill forty sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Todd, Alderman Bacaro, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Boyd, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance amended sections two and three of ordinance number seven, zero, three, 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 and containing that emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the first, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number forty.
You're moving so fast, Mr. President, boy. I thought that I was gonna have time. I'm still printing this board bill out. Okay, here it is. Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to perfect board bill number forty, which is an amendment to the traffic calming policy as we know it while we were out of session.
Hold on, it's been moved by Alderman from the first and retained the second on that motion.
Second, second.
Seconded by the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh. Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board bill number forty is an amendment to a traffic calming policy regarding speed humps that I think should not have been in place in the first place. When we did it, it was a good faith effort to try to work together collaboratively. What happened is that when certain segments of the administration saw that so many people wanted speed humps, which were for many, many years we couldn't have, and really we started out talking about speed bumps. All of a sudden, we got these things, we're gonna charge you nine hundred dollars for a speed study. I want to thank the former chair of Streets, Alderman Boyd. He and I actually met when he was still the chair. We met with President of Board of Public Services, Rich Bradley. We met with Jamie Wilson, who was the director of Streets. We had a meeting up in the Board of Public Services office. We talked and, and we talked about some of these policies, why they were in fact, in effect. The Board of Public Service, Rich Bradley, agreed that there didn't have to be a study because we already, they're going to, each street, they're going to make sure that they are addressed. They're gonna address that street so that they make that speed hump fit that street. They're gonna make sure they use good engineering design. We had a instance of one alderperson, I'm not gonna say her name unless he or she wants to say it. They had applied for like thirty streets. They were turned down for all thirty streets. If we had had that pay nine hundred dollars in effect, can you imagine spending almost thirty thousand dollars for them to tell you no? I think some of that was politically motivated. We are all elected officials here at the Board of Aldermen, all twenty-nine of us. We can make recommendations about what we think good for our community. If they are not, the citizens will hold us accountable for it. So, and speed humps are not permanent. They can be removed. And they have been removed. I'm gonna use Alderman from the twenty-third's name because I think he had one removed or changed someplace else. I've had more added where they were missing. So there was no reason to ever have this policy in effect. I think it was a, it was, the whole point was that we wanted to work with the neighbors. So we didn't put speed humps that then affected the next ward. Unfortunately, sometimes whatever we do, it affects the next ward. We can put a stop sign up that affects the next ward. If you actually have it where we have to come to the Streets Committee and have a board bill, the affecting alderperson could then come to the Streets Committee and make an argument that is reasonable of why this is not a good idea. So I think that's much better than leaving it totally up to the street director. It also puts the street director under a lot of pressure. Right now, he's actually doing them already anyway. He saw the writing on the wall and in fact, just sent out a notice to saying that, hey, any of you all that want to get yours done, send it to me by the seventeenth or nineteenth of September. I can't remember the date. So I think that they understand that it's going to happen. And I want to thank my co-sponsors, the people who have supported me with this. And just the other day, I saw on the news, I think one of our fellow alderpeople, people were raising heck about the speeding. You would not believe the emails I'm getting from all of your wards of people who want speed humps, who are sending them to me. And I'm like, you need to contact your alderperson. But they, because they know I'm the chair of Streets, they, I'm getting them from South St. Louis, every place, and North St. Louis with their own petitions. And I have advised each and every one of them to contact their alderperson because I am not the alderperson of the city of St. Louis. So with that, I am asking for your support of board bill number forty.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderwoman from the first yield for a couple of questions?
Alderwoman from the first, Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention to this issue. Like, I think all of us, we hear about speeding constantly. It's an incredible problem throughout the city. It's extremely dangerous. And I think we're all very willing to look at, you know, what are options, especially around street, good street design, knowing that we can't have a police officer on every street corner pulling people over constantly for speeding. So I appreciate the attention to this matter. I'm curious, when I'm reading over the language, it sounds to me that there would be an ordinance passed and then if, and then BPS would just automatically approve any, any request as long as it meets these conditions and, and we'd have, and we'd have, so for every speed hump, we'd have to have an ordinance? Is that how this reads?
Not every speed humps. Well, so I've done a lot of them. I do speed humps by area and I do them by street. So I don't put one speed hump on a street. But you could, you don't have to do it with one, for every board bill. You could say, this is the area I'm working in and this is where I want speed humps and this is the ordinance I'm passing. So it doesn't have to be singularly. You could do it singularly for a street, much as we do stop signs, or you could do it collectively. You could do it with another, another alderperson, which is what Alderman Bosley and I did with some of street closings recently. So there's more than one way to do it. It's just that it brings an, why I wanted an ordinance, because I had heard some pushback from some people saying, well, if they put that there, it will affect my ward. So that way, that would give that alderperson notice that they were going there and that they could come and say, this is how this would negatively affect my ward and why I don't think this is a good idea.
So, so every, so every speed hump at some point has to go through the board bill process. Is that accurate?
Yeah, every one, but it doesn't have to be singularly. It wouldn't be saying, I'm putting two speed humps on Maffet. You could do that as a larger board bill. I want, I want you to know as the chair, I'm requiring them to tell me where all the speed humps are going anyway, and I'm going to publish it. I was appalled even before I became the chair, when they were holding mine up since I was out of favor. And they only did it because I wrote a letter that called them out to find out who got speed humps and who did not. So if you were out of favor, you didn't get them. So this ordinance then lets it go through the process and then the mayor still could veto it or not. And the mayor can still tell the health, I mean, the street director, she doesn't think that's a good idea. Or the street director could decide it's not a good idea. But there is, there are some criteria and yes, long answer is yes, they would go through ordinances.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any further questions. I do, my, my, my approach to this, I think, is, I, I think aldermen should have less discretion over where, I think speed humps and traffic calming should really, should really be left up to the experts, in my opinion. Definitely with input from the public and input from, from the aldermen. But I'm, I'm really not in favor of bringing this process of traffic calming, you know, up for discussion at, at the board level. And I, and I really, I would like to defer to the experts in this matter. I understand that maybe the process hasn't been working how everyone would like and maybe there's disparity in terms of where these speed humps are going. But I would like to see us move towards a process that is more data-driven and less discretionary. My fear is that it's gonna be, you know, the loudest neighbors get the speed humps and then all that does is block by block. I mean, you're talking about how it affects different wards. That's the case too, but also just block by block. And I think it really behooves us to do more comprehensive study and strategy around these things as opposed to knee-jerk reactions to, you know, which, which neighbors are complaining the loudest. They're very valid concerns and I think we need a more data-driven approach to this process. So for that reason, you know, I'm very much in support of finding a better way. I don't think the policy that was shared with us recently goes in the right direction either. But I, but I would like to see us resort to a more data-driven approach.
And I understand that. So when you bring up data, you leave out things. One of the things I did, because one of the reasons you wouldn't have a lot of, a need maybe for speed humps in a lot of areas, because your streets all got closed in the twenty-eighth ward many years ago. So when some people brought that up to me, then I also then said, give me data. I'm a data person. So let me, let's look at all these streets that are closed.
Mr. President, I yielded my time. I didn't have any questions on the floor.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I share in a lot of the sentiments of the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth. I think speeding is a problem. It is a problem for all of us. We hear about it constantly. I've been in the position of having speed humps held up for years and not being able to have them installed until quite recently. And I understand the frustration that that brings to our constituents, especially, you know, if we have had a traffic study and it shows that certain blocks do qualify for them and then, you know, two years later, they're still not installed. So I understand all of that. I think that the, the problems, the solutions though, need to be system-wide solutions and not a continuation of the hodgepodge strategy that we have had when it comes to our streets. When, when these streets decisions are being made, block by block and ward by ward and not comprehensively, it actually creates unsafe streets. Because you can be driving down one road and hit a different, hit a different ward and suddenly have a different set of traffic planning based upon, you know, what the alderperson of that particular ward wants. We need a comprehensive policy, I think, for the entire city that takes on this issue rather than relegating this down to ward by ward level. I think this needs to be true for stop signs as well. We have, I think, more stop signs per capita than just about any city in the country. And it hasn't made us have safer streets. What it has done is create a very strange traffic patterns throughout our city. And it's also created a place where we have higher emissions from cars because of idling than in other cities. I think that the problem that we have had is by and large because of an unresponsive streets director. And I am very hopeful that we have some changes that are coming in that direction and somebody that will approach that job with a citywide lens, with a comprehensive lens, with a data-driven lens, so that we can get a, a streets plan for the city that works, that's not relegating more duties onto alderpeople who are not experts in traffic planning. I will be the first to admit, I am not a traffic engineer. I am not somebody who has a background in streets planning. And I rely on experts to be able to advise me on, on these things. And those experts should be within our streets department. They should be there to guide us and inform us. But ultimately, these policies need to be made comprehensively at a citywide level and not relegated to a ward by ward level that can create a very, a very hodgepodge system. It's been a frustration of mine since I've been in office. And I think that this, while we need to address this issue, I don't think that this is the way to do it. And when we have a vote, I would like to request a roll call. Thanks.
Alderwoman from the, you know, Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the Alderwoman from the first, you'll do a question.
Alderwoman from first, we yield for questions to Alderman from the tenth.
Yes, I would.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm one of those Aldermen. I have about eighteen locations that have been approved. I actually paid for a speed study for some. That's how long ago they've been approved. Does this affect anything that is currently in the works that I've been waiting for for almost two years?
No, in fact, one of the things that would happen- No, in fact, one of the things that would happen is we still would have to submit to the street director if this was a good idea or not. And they would still give their opinion if that was a good idea to put it there or not. Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Ben. That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty first.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderwoman from the first ward yield to questioning?
All along from the first, we'll yield a question to Alderman from the twenty first.
Yes, Mr. President, I will.
Alderman from the twenty first, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I'm reading the legislation. And I noticed where it says, it's pretty, it pretty much says that at no time at an automatic request will a speed bump be put down on any given street. And I'm just curious, do you think that this will slow down the entire process of having?
I'm sorry, can you tell me where you're referring to?
Yes, I can. Hold on, I just clicked out of the legislation. Okay, Alderwoman, are you, are you there?
Yes, I am. I'm waiting for you to tell me the page and line. I'm here.
Yes, it is line item nine. I'm sorry, not line item nine. Line item fifth, line item fifteen is what it is. At no time shall traffic be installed on, page four, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, at no time shall traffic humps being installed on major streets or thoroughfares or bus routes in order to make requests of speed, say for speed humps in a residential area, residential street, and darn, darn, darn. So tell me what that means exactly.
Currently, they do not allow you to put speed bumps on major thoroughfares or bus routes. So like, I can't put speed humps on King's Highway, Union, West Florissant, they are bus routes. So there's been some safety concerns. So I just carried that over as a meeting with the street director and the Board of PPS about, that's why that was in there. Because it's already currently one of the things that they object to.
Oh, so would there be any changes in the, in major streets or thoroughfares or bus routes or emergency routes? Would there be any changes under this legislation as directing the director of streets to come up with a constant, a comprehensive plan? Would there be any changes or additions to streets or subtract some streets from this, you know, from these particular descriptions?
Well, I can give you something that will be a change. I currently have a street that has a bus route on it. But they are, the people want speed humps. They are one of the few in the neighborhood that don't have them. They actually found a different direction that they could put the bus and put it on a major thoroughfare. So it's a win win situation. So that person, that street would become available to have speed humps on because it's not a major thoroughfare. But for years, they just ran the bus down there because it was convenient for the bus. But when we looked at it, they found a different route that then gave them the ability. But other than that, King's Highway would still not be available. Grand, West Florissant, Broadway, snow routes, which they have to have cleared. In a snow route, you can't park on it. If they notify you that we go into our snow route procedures, for those of you who do not know it, then immediately we then have to move our cars. So you cannot have speed humps there because they're going to be using the big equipment to try to clear off the streets. So no, nothing would change from the major thoroughfares or the bus routes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there was going to be no changes, no major changes in that plan. I know at the end it was directing a director to create a plan. I don't, I don't know about this, honestly, Alderwoman. I like the idea of having a comprehensive plan. But I am somewhat hesitant because I think that this will deter other speed bumps from being, this will deter other speed bumps from being installed on streets that we have a hard time against speed bumps for. Now, like the Alderman from the tenth, I've been waiting for speed bumps on residential streets for almost two years now. And I've already been paid for the traffic study and the cost to install them. And will this legislation, will it draw out the process more? Because now we have to go through a whole legislative act. We have to pass a board bill, has to go through committee. Would this draw out the process even more?
It will not dry up the process even more. It will prevent people from saying, no, you cannot have a speed hump just because you are not in favor with the current administration. I did not make it, I didn't want to make it too easy for things that a traffic engineer would say would be a problem. And that's why I put in there about the major streets. I don't know, Alderman, I guess my question to you, if you would answer a question, do you have a major street that you are trying to put speed humps on?
I mean, honestly, I would put speed bumps on, on every street if I could in a ward. I would. I mean, it may, you can sit down, we could talk about natural bridge. I think even with the construction that we did, I think it could use some speed bumps here and there. But not exactly, I don't know. I was just curious about some of the language. But thank you for clarifying. And I do have, I understand your clarification. Thank you very much, Alderwoman. No further questions, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I share some, I, I, I share my colleague from the twenty eighth's appreciation for thinking about this issue and the Alderwoman from the first for, for digging into find a solution. I had, my concerns are twofold and some of my colleagues have brought up some of them. But I'm reminded of a situation a couple of years ago where I needed a stop sign put in at the end of a dead end street. And I put in a request for one. It was right where a school is. There had been two accidents where cars had actually left the road at the end of the street and entered the playground where children were playing, two separate times. And the study found that a stop sign wasn't necessary. So it was up to me to pass an ordinance to put a stop sign in. But of course, I found out that the stop sign wasn't needed at the last day, in which you could introduce a bill for that legislative session. And I had to wait until the following year, a session started to put that stop sign in. Meanwhile, these children who were playing every day during recess were in danger. And not that the stop sign was solving the issue, but it was making parents feel better. It was making the educators feel better and the entire community feel better about that situation. So relying on the legislative process for street calming has problem, is problematic from that perspective. But secondly, most recently, I've been receiving communication from my constituents indicating that Citizen Service Bureau is pointing them directly to their aldermen for solutions that the city should be putting in place, cleaning alleys, you know, doing basic things for which I am not, as an alderman, directly responsible or have any authority over. And it is incredibly increasingly frustrating to, you know, to be, to have the responsibilities placed on us when we don't really have the tools. And even though as aldermen, we do have some budget to put in speed humps, we certainly do not have the budget to address every single traffic calming issue. Nor do I want the constituents of the twentieth wards to think of me as the responsible party for reducing speed throughout our community. Because even with the authority to put in an ordinance that requires a speed hump on every single block, it wouldn't certainly address speeding through the neighborhoods. And I think we really do need a broader, more comprehensive, more effective plan for addressing speeding through our neighborhoods. Because it would, it would be crazy to me that any traffic study in any city, in any street in the city of St. Louis could come back and say that we don't need a speed hump. Because quite literally, every single street in our city is experiencing excessive speeds, extraordinarily dangerous vehicular traffic and an ever present danger for folks that are using their legs or bicycles or other means of transit to propel themselves to our communities. That being said, I think the Alderwoman from the first has some really excellent points here in identifying that when those speed humps are rejected, we need a, we need a path through that. And we do need to be able to rectify, especially if there are disparities and those rejections are taking place in some neighborhoods and not others. I'm infinitely interested in addressing some of those. I've had speed humps denied in my ward that make no sense to me. So there does need to be a review of that process. I'm just not sure that putting it, putting that responsibility and giving the impression to our communities that we are the gatekeepers of the only path for traffic calming is, is a, is a solution that I want to bear on my shoulders as somebody with very, very limited access to the resources to implement those processes and those, those solutions. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues of the board. I, I do want to take a moment to go to the Alderwoman from the twentieth and thank her for pointing out that we are not public administrators and that this city historically has always shoehorned our legislative body, the aldermen, elected officials, into being the kings and queens of their wards. We have these little fiefdoms because this city, you know, our civil service tells everyone to come to the alderman. Alderman, my trash wasn't picked up. Alderman, there's this. Alderman, there's that. Alderman, don't, we don't oversee services. We oversee policy that steer services. And I believe that is exactly what the Alderwoman from the first is attempting to do. She's attempting to utilize policy, our, one of our only authorities as aldermen, in order to address a problem that's been rampant for years, absolute years. I am right at a major highway. And trust, when people come off that highway, they do not slow down. I've had a deaf neighbor have his clothes fluttered by a swift breeze of a car flying down his road that he was unable to hear or see coming. I've had children very nearly hit from a traffic diversion from speed humps. They're not a cure all. They absolutely are not. And it's, it's a multi layered issue. I believe it's a multi layered issue. We have a streets division that's not responding to our speed hump requests. We don't have the enforcement to slow down. We don't have other means of mitigating traffic than physical impediments. We can put a stop sign in. That's not going to stop a single soul from blowing right through it. A speed hump physically slows people down. It can be a temporary measure, I believe. And I've spoken with the Alderwoman from the first on this before. We can put them in, we can take them out. But at the root of all of this is we don't have a means of mitigating speeding traffic on residential streets. We don't have a way of slowing down cars other than, at the moment, other than physical infrastructure that forces them to slow down. And even then, I still see some cars nearly launching themselves off these speed humps. And until this past week, when I was able to get them on the phone, we have not had a responsive streets division, which is phenomenal in other ways. Hampton is an excellent example of a functioning streets division. We can hold two truths at the same time. They can be phenomenal with the Hampton repaving and restriping and still be dropping the ball on this other traffic mitigation area. And I will take the stance that they have. So at worst, Alderwoman from the first, I am a present on this board bill. I am leaning supportive of it. Because if we are going to be shoehorned into being public administrators, if we're going to be constantly forced to breach a fundamental divide between elected officials and public administrators in defiance of the Bay Area bureaucracy, then let's empower ourselves to actually address it. I don't think there is one clear choice forward. I do believe it is a rock and a hard place issue. But I'm going to lean towards the side that actually empowers me to do a damn about something. Because I'm going to get the hate regardless. I mean, my email inbox blows up with requests too. And as the Alderwoman from the twentieth said, we do not have the authority to do these things. I'm going to vote to arm myself with some authority. And once we get that citywide plan, once we get a better method, Alderwoman from the first, I will absolutely support a repeal of this board bill.
Exactly right.
I'm giving you a heads up on that, but we don't have that. We don't have the solutions in front of us. But we still have the issue. So with that, Alderwoman from the first, at worst, I'm a present. At best, I'm a yes. And, Mr. President, I do yield back, thank you.
All right, thank you. All the, Alderman from the twenty fifth. Took his hand down, so Alderman from the twenty.
Yeah, my hand down, Mr. President, thank you for recognizing.
You're welcome. Alderman from the twenty third.
Yes, so I, I definitely support this. But in what we've done is, because I talked to Jamie and apparently they said, you know what? Their policy now is on a smaller street. If you want them, you can have them. So now they gave me all fifty two of them, which is two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which is not fundable. I mean, fund some of them. But what we're going to do is basically do a, let the people on the block make that decision by petition. One of the things I would ask, can we, if we're going to do these by, by ordinance, which is fine, can, so for next year's budget, which will actually probably be the last budget that we have by, in our wards, can we do that by grouping? In other words, if there's like ten blocks, give me the petition saying they want them. Can that board bill just include all the speed humps for that? You know, that, do ten different bills, but one bill listing the, the streets. Now, the street department wants to put where the locations, where they would be. I'm fine with that. But I guess my question is, by ordinance, can I just do, name my streets and the hundred blocks all on one, all on one, or on one?
Board bill.
On one board bill, yeah.
Alderman from the twenty third, are you asking Alderwoman from the first to yield a question?
Yeah, yes.
Alderwoman from the first, will you yield a question to Alderman from the twenty third?
Yes, Mr. President, but I've been married a long time. So when husbands don't finish a sentence, I finish it for them. Sorry, what his question was. He was trying to say board bill. Yes, I will.
Yeah, Alderman from twenty third, you, please proceed.
You, you, you have the gist of the question.
Yes, it can be done that way.
Okay, that's fine. And I am definitely in support of this because whether or not you believe we have any authority to do anything, it, we, you know, we basically don't. When we, when we put these in and people call us and we say, look, it's not on us. People believe it's on us. And you don't see the mayor of the street department out there saying, the aldermen don't have the say on this. What they do do is, and we use the word do do, what they do is throw it back at us and say, oh, well, that's up to your aldermen. They have to fund it. Then people call me and then I try to even do it in emails to keep the neighbors in it. And they always have a way of twisting it back like somehow it's my fault. You know, well, your, your alderman did not fund the study. Well, the study was more than the, the, the speed hump. So then the neighbors are like, why didn't you fund the study? Well, because I would have spent sixty thousand dollars on studies. And there would have been no money left for the speed humps. But they always have a way of saying, well, it's your alderman's fault. So I, I am one hundred percent behind this. I think that, you know, just like stop signs, and, and I'm sorry that did not work out, you know, for Alderwoman Spencer. Because I've been caught at the end of a session on a board, on board bills. And, and as the Alderwoman from the first has reminded me time and time again, you just need to know when to introduce your board bills so you know when to get them out. It's not my fault if you don't. So anyway, I am in one hundred percent, that was in my whole thing. But like I said, they spin it back on us. You didn't fund it, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. We should not have to fund them. If the speed limit, you know, right now, the, the way they, my understanding is the way the street department set now is, if the speed limit is on a street, that's a side street with a low speed limit, you know, you can have them. The reason for the petition is I've had to take, actually take them off the streets. Because usually it's one person that calls me and tells me, you know, kids are going to die, the world's going to come to an end. If we don't put the speed hump the whole block once, then I put them in. And people on the block call me, I don't want these things. I don't want it in front of my house. So that's why, you know, what we, what we're doing now is we are doing it by petition. Fifty one percent will, you know, follow the, the, you know, can't be on a major street, on side streets. We're doing it that way. But anyway, I do support this, but I will just kind of be quiet and listen now.
Thank you, Alderman from twenty third. Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Yes, well, the Alder, Mr. President, will the Alderwoman from the first yield for questions?
Alderwoman from the first, we'll yield for questioning to Alderwoman from the fourteen.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman from the fourteen, please proceed.
Alderwoman from the first, I appreciate your attention to this matter. It is a problem getting these solved. There's, you know. Many of us have waited three to five years. I guess what I would, would like to see is maybe an option in this. You know, our constituents think that, that seem to believe, for whatever reason, that the speed hump is the. The solution to any traffic problem. And I don't believe that. I mean, I get complaints, somebody's driving up the street the wrong way and we need a speed hump. Well, a speed hump isn't gonna fix that, as we know. We do need more enforcement. I would, I would like to maybe add a section that at the option of the alderman. You know, with the traffic study, because sometimes I think people, you know, jump to this and, you know. We're, we're put in a position of being the traffic engineer. That we have a backup to say, well, you know, let's conduct a study and get some data on this. Because like I said, you know, you get a request for a speed hump because somebody's driving the wrong way and I, I really am hesitant because. I don't know that they really calm traffic. I would like to see more enforcement, but that's a whole nother ball of wax and we talked about that, you and I. So have you, have you thought about adding a option that it would be up to our discretion if we wanted to implement that?
Um, actually, if you look at page four of five, right at, starting at the end of line fifteen, that is exactly in there. An alderman may request a speed study for speed humps in residential alleys or residential streets. And the water he, the ward he or she is elected to represent, if it is their belief, said speed study is needed. And it prevents them from charging you. That's the next thing it does.
Right, right, okay.
I gotta talk to you about that and I think I put it in because you had asked me.
Yeah, because sometimes, you know, when it's up to you and you're, it's against your better judgment, it's, you have no out.
I agree, I understand.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I missed that. I read through it and, and I missed that because we were talking and I was trying to listen at the same time. I don't, I don't multitask very well.
Don't say that out loud, women multitask.
Well, I multitask, but not as well as I used to. Let's put it that way. And I, and I'll do a lot of, a lot of things as well as I used to. But I appreciate that and I, I guess with that in, in there, I am in support of this because. I don't see any solution other than us taking this by, the bull by the horns, because it does fall in our lap. For whatever reason, I agree that this should be out of our hands, but it does fall in our hands because when they call. CSB, it's call your alderman, call your alderman. And I, I got some nasty letters for ones that I did not get put in. That I applied for two years ago, um, just recently and took a, a, a bit of a. You know, took it on the chin for that one. But anyway, I appreciate this and I am in support of this because I think this gives us options. And I, I don't like to have to use the legislative powers to put in speed humps, but it is what it is and. I hope that the ones I have in the making now that are promised in the fall.
October, October, November.
Yes, that's, that's what it's promised. We'll see are, are implemented and that'll be all the speed humps I need to do. Okay, thank you very much, Alderwoman from the first. I appreciate this and I am in support of it. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, uh, all the men from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, with the alderwoman for the first yield.
Alderman from the first, will you yield to the alderman from the third?
Um, I don't like being on this end of it. I'm usually the person saying that, but I guess I will anyway.
All right, Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Thank you. So does this bill get rid of, once again, the, uh, the need for a speed study?
Yes, it does. You do not have to have it, but if it is in your infinite wisdom that you believe you need one, you can have it done. They cannot charge for the speed study.
So, um, so is it from your recollection that these speed studies have been one of the reasons why? People have been waiting for multiple years to get speed bumps?
It is my recollection, that's what they used. I think it was politics. When you look, so I will release the list. Because I made them give me the list of who got it. And when you look at the list, then you will know that it was politics from the mayor's, mayor's office. Depending on what your status was or was not. It also, if you look at it, was racial politics, okay? So, um, and I only got the ones that I helped, I, I got and helped you and Alderman from the twenty first and some others get. Is when I raised that data that people like to talk about, when you look at this list, the data is very clear. That, uh, study was used because they felt that they could, uh, strong arm us is the word I would like to look, use. Into paying more money when it would absolutely was not needed. And under a little questioning of. Rich Bradley agreed that once you have an engineer designing, um, for each street, you don't need a study. So I, I think that study was just used as a way to slow us down.
Understood. I appreciate that. Can you describe another traffic calming method that is, that we have control over right now?
Sure.
The streets director would like to put up a, a stop sign in the ward, could he just do that because he'd like to put one up in the ward?
They actually can. They can take down traffic lights, which they have done in North St. Louis without even talking to the alderpeople. They talked, took down my traffic light at Maffin and King's Highway without talking to me. Um, in the fourth ward, they took down one at. Martin Luther King, all of them down Martin Luther King, they've been taking traffic lights down. It was at Martin Luther King and Sarah where there since been. A number of accidents. Uh, they closed streets. Uh, they, although they have some of us pay for. What we call shameful pots or jersey barriers. Uh, so as the chair of streets, you know, I've been very, uh, I've been acquiring. Because for years we didn't pay for shameful pots. And when I came back here, I was shocked that they had us paying for shameful pots. And then I found out downtown, when I started asking about who paid for them and I wanted to see the, uh. The budget of where, who, what ward paid for them. They got real like quiet. And this was under the previous administration and then they gave me my speed humps, okay? Because I don't believe that they're paying for them downtown. And to me, that's not fair. And as the, uh, chair of streets, I'm gonna continue to inquire in that. I'm gonna ask for accountability. I'm gonna ask for receipts. I, I don't believe that we should be paying for those shameful pots because I think that we get them free. And then, and if we don't, then we should be able to see. A pace, something which they ordered them and paid for them, a contract and then how we paid for them. So. Yes, there are a number of things that the, uh, street director can do, don't have to talk to us. Which has done in different wards. In other wards, they tell us they can't do it. As I said, I got ours when I did write a letter to the former public safety director, Jimmy Edwards, who was my constituent. I wrote it to the street director, BPS. I pointed out the hypocrisy because I had made them. And it took me seven or eight months while, when I am able as a chair of a committee to get anything that I request. As all the rest of you chairs can, we have the same, same power as the mayor or the comptroller to get information. But they were holding on to it because the list is embarrassing. So yes, your answer, yes, they can do any kind of traffic calming they want, but they don't often.
And when those things generally happen, uh, you get calls about it from your constituents. What would be the proper protocol when the streets department? Can I still be heard? I'm getting calls coming in.
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, generally, what is the proper protocol when streets does make a move that is not approved by the alderpeople? Or that wasn't petitioned by the street? What, uh, generally happens after that happens and you're contacted by your constituents? How do we change that?
In all my years sitting on the streets, which I started in ninety one and I've sat there all my career except for four years. When they were gonna do something like that in your ward, they would notify you and ask your opinion. And then if you had a, a reasonable reason why it wouldn't happen, they didn't usually do it. And so I was shocked when I looked out my window one day and they just took down a street light with no conversation.
Alderman from the third. He's, he's videos, bro.
Understood. One correlation, I think that, am I frozen?
You're back, you're back.
I can't answer the phone right now. Am I back? My, I'm sorry, I'm getting like a bunch of different calls coming in at one time. It's, sorry about that. I, I did hear what you said. Uh, alderwoman ties, my apologies. Um, so with that being said. That, as a few people kind of, uh, talked about earlier in conversation. That they don't want to necessarily be attached to certain services. I think regardless of, of what. Happens, whether we are involved or not, people expect us to get involved when things aren't necessarily going the way that they like to. Uh, the constituents utilize us for multiple services when our number one service is to provide legislation for them. So I wanted to ask, um, you specifically. Uh, about the other traffic calming methods that we have, that we have to utilize board bills for. One of them, I would say, will be closing down streets. Could you just give us a brief, or give me a brief, uh, idea of how you close a street? A lot of our constituents don't know. I think this is a very important part of the conversation because it shows what we do have control over. Some things that we don't have control over and by maybe a good reason to look at this from maybe a different perspective and see what it looks like having a big control over. Or not having a big control over.
Um, actually, to close a street, you have to, uh, do a board deal. It has to be submitted. Actually, there's a checklist for going through for street closures. I actually have been working on a new draft for that so that we could put it out in writing so people would know forward. You would send the request to the streets department. They actually check with a number of departments, the fire department, the police department. The streets departments and the BPS to see if that, that is okay. Um, if they sign off on it, then you introduce a board bill to close the street. Um, I additionally, some people don't. I am a petition person. There is never a street closing. A thing that I turn around, if I turn a street around, any kind of those kind of traffic calming, uh, policies, even all these speed humps that I've put in. I actually mail petitions now because we're in COVID, but before that, we would have a person walk the petition. You would have to have for me in my ward, not for you, but for mine, you would have to have sixty five percent of the people, uh, agree to it. Then you have to submit it to me. I then turn around and mail to the people who signed and the people who did not sign to make sure that everybody is aware. That this is something that's happening, so no one is left out on the street. That doesn't know what's happening. And then ask the people who didn't sign, are you opposed to this or are, are you supportive of this? Now, you don't have to do it that way. That is how I do it. But what is minimally required is to, uh, request, uh, the modification. To, uh, the traffic calming to the, uh, streets department traffic commissioner and then get, uh, sign offs or. Recommendations from the fire, police, street and BPS. And then you have to, uh, have a board bill that has to come to the board of aldermen. That has to be passed and signed into law by the mayor.
Understood. And that gives the people who live on those blacks, some blocks, some opportunity to come before. The committee and in hearing and be able to explain why they think the street needs to be closed and those who have grievances will be able to do the same, correct?
That is correct.
So would you, would you say that's one of the most asked for things in your area, speed bumps, you know, as far as traffic calming is concerned? Speed bumps and, um, uh, streets being blocked off?
It is. And actually, I had started this before I got Jerry, racially gerrymandered. I had started doing it. Uh, back when I was a twenty four to alter person. I took a lot of heat. Actually, the, the process that I told you about, the former chair was a Phyllis Young. And she liked my process so much that she adopted and several other people because it was very inclusive. Um, and so that stopped when I was removed from my area. But when I came back, I started looking at it again. Because I have, uh, a lot of old North St. Louis are, have very straight streets. And so in my area, I got forty seven, forty eight, forty nine, hundred blocks, fifty, fifty one, fifty two, and it goes straight through. And so people would be coming from two and three neighborhoods and just flying through the residential streets. So I did close a lot. If you go down King's Highway, most of my streets between Martin Luther King and Natural Bridge are closed. They are closed because people were just, uh, driving so fast and we were gonna lose our population. And, and it's a lot of black middle class and of a middle class, working class people that live there, doctors, teachers and lawyers. And so they were moving. And so, uh, when I did that, they got them to stay there. They felt like that they were empowered about their streets. Residential streets and alleys is not a thoroughfare for anybody who thinks they want to cut through. That's what we have major thoroughfares and secondary streets for. So, um, once we got that straight, there were some people who had felt, hurt feelings, didn't want it, but as it started to work and we, um, it was. Because some people thought it was too, um, they thought it as gentrification and locking people out and leaving people out. And so when that was worked through, people loved it. And then for years, they also asked for speed humps, um, which was illegal. Because if you hit a speed hump, which is higher than a bump, it would always, uh, had been the opinion of the, uh, city counselor. That, uh, if we hurt someone because we had put that hump there, that we would be the city liable for that. So. I defended that policy for years, um, when the, the former alderman from the twenty seventh ward, I want to say Chris Carter. Was the, uh, alderman. I think that's when we changed, uh, and allowed speed humps to be a policy. And once we did, people started asking for them. And I wrote when, back when Deanna Vanneker was the street commissioner. And asked for these things, which she okayed. And from the time that she, this was back soon as we got them passed. And I did not get any into, uh, I want to say. August, September of last year, which was twenty, so from way back, because, uh, ultimate Carter left in seventeen, so seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. I could not get a speed hump, no matter what I said, what streets, until, um, the young white girl got killed down in, um. On Washington Street and they immediately put all this traffic calming up. And that's when I wrote my very inflammatory but truthful letter. To the people I told you about. And they all then said, oh, oh, get her speed humps now. I don't think I should have to do that, okay? And so that is what happened. Um, I also pointed out how there were so many streets already closed in certain neighborhoods. Um, including, your father used, used to be the chair of, uh, former alderman from the third, I guess, Alderman Bosley senior used to be the chair of streets. He closed a lot of streets. Terry Kennedy closed a lot of streets. I was on my way until I was gerrymandered, I've closed a lot of streets. There's actually. A, um, term about, uh, uh, how you protect communities by closing off streets. It was often used against blacks and other minorities for gentrification, but it also was, could be used for traffic safeties and to protect your neighborhoods. And to make sure that they were safe, which has worked very well for me. I actually don't need this board bill. I'm just about finished with my, uh, speed humps. Because after I did that and I've, I've gotten all of mine okayed now. And so I got ninety percent of mine are okayed or done already. Um, and it has made the world of difference. I used to get pictures from people and I could share them with this, uh, board. In which people were flying down those streets and knocking up, uh, cars up into the, um, for people's front porch. They had all kind of damage with houses. They had some kids that got hit. Actually, P, uh, kid got, uh, killed at the corner of Union. And, uh, uh, Wabba Duh. And I had had that street closed for, uh, a time. And the former mayor would not clo, would not order the people to close it or had told, uh, I'm, I don't say it's the mayor, it was the director of operations, Ty Waltman. So he had told them not to do it. When the person got killed, I actually sat there on the floor of this board and said, oh, okay, you guys are murderers. Funny how the next day they went out and put those, uh, uh, shameful pots up. Um, street closings and speed humps have been the, uh, thing that have been a savior for my neighborhood. And, um, so I am gonna put them every place I can that is legally possible. There's nobody who's, uh, complained because it was on one street. What they said is, can we have it on our street? And I've tried to comply. Uh, with the, the requirements, um, that I've spoke to with the board of, uh, board of public service and the street director. Um, and I'll give you an example, down on King's Highway, I have this northernmost edge of King's Highway between I seventy and West Florissant. And they get their cars hit all the time and it's a meeting there and it's very small. Uh, I would love to put speed humps there, but it is a, uh, snow route. And even though it's all, um, residential, there's just not anything I can do right now. And I have been seeking all kinds of opportunities of what to do. Um, I can't even put shameful pots because that street is so narrow. So we have been, but, but I have been seeking a solution. But my best solution has been to close off streets and to, uh, put in speed humps.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. With the alderwoman from the fifteenth, yield a question?
Alderman from the fifteenth, will you yield a question to the alderman from the third?
She might be gone.
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the third, please proceed.
Thank you, alderwoman from the fifteenth. Um, so, so to my understanding, um, and I guess, let me ask you. To block off a street. Um, as right now through the ordinance process, do you think that would be, uh, something that should call for a speed study? I mean, not a speed study, but a, some sort of a study before we block off a street?
I do. Um, I think that street closures like stop signs, like speed humps should be considered in a comprehensive. Way that is data driven.
Okay. How often do you get called within your neighborhoods and within your rank there for? How often do you get called within your neighborhoods and within your rank there for street closures or for speed bumps?
Street closer, street closures just about never. Um, if anything, people want streets opened back up. Um, but for speed humps, I probably get five emails a day, um, probably a couple dozen phone calls about it a week.
So you're talking what, five, six hundred, maybe a thousand emails about that per year?
Yes, I think that'd probably be adequate.
So you you got one thousand people that email you per year? How how many blocks do you have in your ward?
Well, I don't know the number and I I would add into that, some of those emails are duplicates, people that are contacting me every couple of months wanting to know where. We are in the speed hump process.
Uh, so how many years have these people been sending you duplicate emails?
Um, for several years.
Seven years, eight years, ten years, how many years we talking?
Not that long. Um, when the speed hump ordinance first passed, we did a pilot program. It humps uh off of South Grand to basically try it out, see how the community responded to it, if they liked this as a tool or not. Um, and we came back about a year later after they had time to um work and people got accustomed to it. And uh we actually, we do participatory budgeting in the fifteenth ward, so uh residents can vote on how we spend our ward capital dollars. And the number two item that residents voted on, um and about four thousand, I think residents voted on our ward capital priorities. Um, the number two thing that they chose was more speed humps.
Okay, all right, so so once again, we talking five years, six years, seven years for these residents who've been sending multiple emails, a thousand of them just about per year? I'm 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 curious about, once again, the duplicate people, how long have these people been waiting specifically for speed humps? Now, I know you um you talk about the participatory participatory budgeting piece, but as far as how long have the duplicate people in your emails who constantly are asking? For you to provide them information about why they haven't received these speed bumps for several several years, how many years are we talking? Let's say the person who's been asking on a particular block for the longest that's in the queue right now, how many years has that person been waiting? Just an example of.
Probably about two and a half to three years at this point in time.
All right, so that's definitely not several, but several sounded much better to me in the beginning, but the point is, you know, two, two to three years, right? Let's say three is that maximum?
Yes.
So what is the reasoning behind that three-year wait? Now, as a question. Um, that person has been waiting for three years, have you received any speed bumps at all in the last three years in your ward?
Not since the pilot program and I can tell you exactly why, it took three years. Um, took three years because I could not get an email response from the streets director after. Um, we had the traffic studies, there it was identified, I think twenty.
Who was that street director? Who was the street director? Jane, Mr. Jamie Wilson, didn't respond to your email?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
So I cannot get a response, correct, I could not get a response from him um until actually the new administration came in. And I finally got a a response back um a couple of months ago about a traffic study that had. Approved all of these, um, you know, nine.
So that was under Mayor Cruz's administration, correct? Under uh Mayor Cruz's administration?
Correct.
How long have you been an Alderperson?
Uh, almost seven years.
So prior to that administration getting in, and we talked about speed bumps that people have been waiting for three years. So prior to that administration, you were an Alderperson also under Slay. Um, was Mr. Wilson the commissioner then?
No, he was not. Deanna Vanke was and um and we were able to. Correct, Deanna was.
Okay, so during those years, you were able to get your speed bumps very quickly, would you say? When you had Deanna.
Uh, quickly after the studies. Yeah, what, I mean, it was the same protocol, you had to do a study. Um, the block had to be shown to have the five miles an hour or more uh sustained speeds. Um, same protocol, it just was a faster process from doing the studies to actually getting them implemented.
So how long would you say under that administration during that commissioner being there, it took you to get speed bumps from, you know, the time you requested them to the time they were. Um, putting your streets?
Probably about a year and a half.
About a year and a half, what would you say was the difference in in the uh, you know, the rate of 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 getting what it is that you needed from that that administration?
I think it was just responsiveness of the folks who are working in the streets department, um responding to the emails, signing off on the. Um, the study once it had been done by CBB. That process just happened faster.
So had that process been happening? With this current administration, I mean, well, had it been happening, yeah, with this current administration and the last administration, you would deem that. Uh, uh, pretty much, um, you know, adequate enough for for services?
The last administration, no. Um, it's, you know, it should not take me emailing the streets director fifteen times to get a response on a traffic study.
Understood, well, some with the prior administration, my apologies, I guess my question wasn't clear enough, uh with the prior administration. Would would, you know, the way that they handled the situation and it took about a year and a half, would you say that that was, you know, you were serviced properly?
Um, under the Slay admini- yeah, under the the Slay administration, I think a a year and a half is probably. About what we can expect because we have to have a study done and there also has to be um an RFP issued to be able to. Install the the speed humps and that process takes time. If we can move all of this stuff in-house um and not have to contract anything out, if we if we had the. The, you know, the staffing within the streets department, which is a, which is what I hope this current administration moves to. So that we don't have to contract with an outside consultant to do the speed studies and we don't have to contract. Out to an outside entity to install the speed humps, that process would go faster.
I definitely appreciate that and and that's one of the things that this this I believe does to some degree. We are getting away with the speed study in general, seems like once again, you'd rather that be in-house and we just pay a person to go out and do that speed study. This is, am I correct?
I am, but I also think that we should have speed hu- speed studies in order to put these in. Um, you know, I I don't think it should just be discretionary as to where they are, I think there needs to be some data that is informing. Um, the placements of these speed humps.
Okay, and you know, I feel that, and that's good, everybody has to have an opinion, especially when it comes down to certain things like that. But I I definitely, you know, would like to ask also if, say for instance, um. You know, the director of streets doesn't want to put a speed hump on a block, but the entire residents that are there have petitioned. And said they want a speed bump and there's no real adequate reason why. Uh, you know, the study shows other than it maybe doesn't get enough traffic for a speed bump to be placed there, what would you do as an Alderperson? In the time where there's a conflict where the residents are telling you this is what we want and then you have this this person who doesn't live on that block. In that particular area or does not uh live in close proximity to it, doing the speed study saying that it doesn't fit a criteria across the city that we're warrant a speed study. How do you as an Alderperson handle that and deal with your constituents?
I give them the data. Um, you know, I've brought to neighborhood meetings the um reports that I've gotten from speed studies that show the the. Uh, recorded average speeds on each block so that residents can see, you know, this block was, you know. Four miles over or five miles over the speed limit, this block wasn't. Um, so that they can understand the process better and understand that these decisions are being made strategically. Um, and informed by data and not just, you know, one-off decisions based upon. A block that maybe has more engaged residents than another block.
All right, understood. Um, and I appreciate the answer and the questions. Um, another, just a, and I'll let you go in here in just a second. You said uh once before that your people or your residents are asking for your streets to be open back up, right? Be- because they've been blocked off some time ago?
We don't have many that are blocked off, what they mostly did in the fifteenth ward is they made um. Instead of blocking them off, they made streets that dead-ended into other streets, so they made one ways go the opposite direction. Into each other, so you could be driving, you know, eastbound down a street and then all of a sudden the next block. Is do not enter because you can only enter it westbound. Um, and I've had requests from residents to reevaluate that so it's easier to get through the neighborhood in a. You know, every other street is is a one-way rather than kind of guessing, like I have five one-ways that all go the same direction in a row. Um, which does not make sense.
Is is it safe to say that was done some time ago because of rapid speeding and that was utilized as traffic calming?
I think it was a combination of perhaps traffic calming, um, but also safety. Uh, um, I think that there was a school of thought at the time that if you could make it harder to get through the neighborhood. That make it harder for, um, you know, somebody that was committing a crime to get out of the neighborhood. Um, but I think somebody who's trying to get out of the neighborhood, um, after they committed a crime probably isn't going to pay attention to one-way streets.
Okay, well, you don't deal with as much crime as some of the people who are on this call. We deal with a whole lot of, you'd be surprised what people who are committing crimes would do. Some of them look just like me, some of them don't, but we got a lot of them that we deal with, you'd be surprised what people think about. But that's for another conversation, what I would like to to put out there and point out is that you are making. I believe, uh, you know, a decision that's good for what you believe and think, but I think it's also a good idea to think about also. The individuals who are directly affected by um the type of speeding that we get. Some of this isn't just about people having a lead foot, some of these people are in shootouts, some folks are on their way to a shootout, some people are in stolen cars. There's more than a few reasons why we get multiple calls for speed bumps, speed humps. And uh streets being closed off repeatedly by these residents, they feel safer. When the street is uh more intimate and that's where the blockage comes from. And if they can't get those things blocked off because they lived on more of a thoroughflu- thoroughfu- thoroughflu. Um, then they like to just have the bumps because at bare minimum, people can go from one end of the block down to the other going fifty, sixty miles per hour. Um, so I I do understand where you where you're coming from, but I did want to know specifically. What were those calls like for those particular services in your ward? Um, because people, as you know, call you for things that aren't that are service related, they call you, as you said, uh, you know, you wanted to get speed bumps, you tried to get in touch with the commissioner. As plenty other people um have and some people got speed bumps, some people didn't. But your people came to you about them and you got residents that's been waiting for three years, three whole years for speed bumps, don't have them right now. And you are saying you don't want to switch up the process now, you know, to me.
I'm not saying I don't want to switch the process, that is not what I said.
Okay, well, my apologies, let me not throw that in 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 your mouth. Throw words in your mouth. Uh, you are saying, or or let me not say you're saying, you're voting. Um, to to not change up the the process in which you kind of don't like already. You know, you've been waiting for three years for something to something to shake and we're saying, hey, let's shake the tree. Um, and I I, you know, you've been apprehensive from our perspective, uh, because we don't want to be labeled. Of people dealing with services and that's what we, you know, we do, especially on size of the place, I mean, in size of the city. Where Alderman are service providers, we may have to get out there and cut grass, we may have to go clean up somebody's alley because there's only three people on the block. You know, not to say that you don't get your hands dirty, but you know, when you look at calls for service on your side of town and you look at calls for service on the north side of town. We get, I would say, one thousand times more calls about the speed bumps than the thousand emails that you get about them and that's comparable. You know, and emails through the citizen service bureau all at any given time, so. You know, you have to look at and think about your colleagues at the same time and the amount of things that we have to deal with that you all don't deal with. Think about the individuals, the thousands of people who want speed bumps but afraid to say they need them because they don't want to end up having them and somebody gets. You know, uh, caught driving down the street through a drive-by and they know miss such and such has speed bumps and they want to come shoot a house up. These are realistic things that we have to deal with, it's not necessarily always about. Uh. Whether or whether or not, how would I say, uh, you know, I'm not going to take it to that particular place, I appreciate it, thank you very much, what uh Alderman Stephens. Uh, you have a question, and I'm gonna make this real quick and I'm gonna I'm gonna hop off, I know I've been talking for a second, but. I want my constituents to know that I care about the speed bump thing because they on my neck. They think that if we get speed bumps, the shooting is going to stop, we're not, let me not say it like that, but they think a lot will happen with these speed bumps and this is a good conversation to have. And I want them to know that I, hey, I'm I'm trying.
Okay, Alderman from the twelfth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the third?
Uh, I will, yes, Alderman.
Alderman from third, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman Stephens, what what would you say is the most uh calls for service you get from your constituents here in the twelfth ward?
So here in the twelfth ward, um, as of late, it's been quite a bit of refuse and I will say that our refuse division. Has been very excellent in responding to those requests, very prompt, all things considered. Um, I would say that speed humps or traffic mitigation as a whole is also quite large, we recently had the ride of the century, which is a motorcycle event. Um, down in Ward eleven for which Alderwoman from the eleventh, I thought handled wonderfully um and handled it with an inch reward look at it. Um, so traffic to be very reductive, traffic, safety and services, just like all of us.
Understood, so people call you directly for what specifically about uh traffic?
So uh constituents from both my ward and neighboring wards reach out to me by call, text or email. Uh, usually to my personal cell phone and with regards to traffic, a lot of arterial issues, so speeding. Along Lothborough, uh, Germania is a big one, especially once we get closer to fifty-five, again, my ward is located right at fifty-five. In several exit ramps, um, so we we get that sort of highway mentality, highways bring unique issues. Um, the Hampton, you know, so what speeding, um, not.
So, so they call you specifically about the speeding?
Uh, well, yes, and various traffic laws as well, so, hey, Alderman, we just went down to three lanes on Hampton and people are using the center lane. To like skip ahead in line, you know, stuff like that.
So so what do you think you're going to do about it?
Well, what I tell my constituents is I explain, you know, as your elected official, I'm your representative in city hall. And uh I I'm not a public administrator, right, so there's a separation between having the authority to do these services. And having the authority to steer the direction of the city, which is our authority. And funding it, I mean, I I do explain our budgets and budgetary process and all that, so I tell them. I tell them that I will direct it to the right person that in this role, I'm essentially a reference librarian.
So so what do you do, give me, give me a real life example, somebody speeding down the street, they say, you know, about the specific speeding. Do you have any, you know, maybe just just a quick something, what happens when your constituent calls you and say, there's constant speeding down the street, people are driving. Sixty miles per hour on this thirty uh mile per hour residential street, what you going to do about it, Alderman Stephens?
Well, I say, um, Alderman Stevens.
Stevens, my apologies.
That's okay, that's okay, Alderman, uh, you are correct, phonetically it should be Stephens, but. It's been my whole life, so no worries. Um, you know, I I tell them. First and foremost, I always thank them for reaching out, I think we need more engagement between the citizenry and local office and public, good local government, um, so. I I tell them that, you know, I'm going to, here's my process, I'm going to reference this or send this to the right people. The right people being the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, District One, to keep them looped into it, be that Captain Moore. Um, or Captain Marks, if it's in Wilmore Park, she is District Two's captain. Uh, I let Streets Division know, like, hey, you know, can we look at this, what do we need to do? I've got a few traffic studies planned um for this sort of more arterial roads such as Lothborough, south of Crandall Park. Piranha Boulevard from Morgan Ford to Fifty. Caron de Le Boulevard from Morgan Ford to fifty-five, so on and so forth. And I overall explain the bureaucratic process of, okay, you've initiated this by letting me know, which is the first step. We need to know the issue. And then walk them through the process of how we're going to and how we have to address it with our current paradigms. So.
Okay. So so that's interesting. Once again, what is the median income in your area?
Well, so it depends. So I have two neighborhoods.
Let's say the highest median income.
It's disingenuous to to misrepresent Boulevard Heights. So Princeton Heights median income, based on a study by the children's health network or something, I I would have to look up where I source this. But the median income is eighty to ninety thousand, I believe. Boulevard Heights, however, which is predominantly Ward twelve, is lower than that. We're closer to the poverty level. Maybe I would roughly say fifty to sixty thousand off, making that a rough estimate. The three houses I have in Crandlet, I cannot speak for.
Okay, thank you. And so the reason I'm making that reference is important for, you know, some of my residents who do look at this, like, people always say, hey, you know, where's, where's where's white at is better. Is white is right, you know, if they got, they got more money they making, they get better services. So let's let's really look at that realistically. I tell my residents a little something different when they call me, but I want to know specifically what it is that you doing a more poor part of town when your constituents call you and say, hey, they're speeding up and down the street. So I want to know what that protocol is where you get relief from that speeding. You know, because once again, we get these every single day, every single day. There's a call about somebody speeding or a child that's got hit and the importance of having something done immediately because something has to be done. So with with that being said, with them seeing the the stark difference between our median income, your median income, the the demographic makeup of your neighborhood, demographic makeup of some of my neighborhoods, it's important to know what different protocols are being made where they feel that there's some better relief happening across across town. And if you're doing something different than what we're doing, then we probably need to be figuring out how it is you get it done and who's making things work on that side of town so smoothly. So the question, as I proceed to ask, I want to make sure we get it clearly, is when that that resident finally gets in touch with you, they they utilize the democratic process and you get them in touch with, let's say, first thing you do is you see, like you said, you send out an email to the captain. All right, you put them in an email. What are we asking the captain to do? So I can make sure I I can replicate this. What what are we asking the captain to do that gets this? And what type of response time? But let's, what what is the captain? What do you send to the captain? And how how does, you know, how has that helped? Because I need to be very clear because we we doing something wrong. We need to know how counterparts are doing and how they're getting it done.
Well, Alderman of the third, I I would like to preface this with, so far, I have not received any speed humps. I myself also utilize a petition system, such as most of our colleagues here at the board. And to date, I've only had one petition request, which is currently pending. I've requested, I've made the executive or I guess the legislative decision to request two studies. And that was because of safety concerns. And to date, those studies have not been conducted. Now, following a conversation this past week with Director Wilson, Jamie Wilson, as per his email, those streets will be getting speed humps. And again, it is because children were almost hit or because of my deaf neighbor. It was, I mean, very closely sideswiped. But to date, even though I I do have more affluent wards, I'm sorry, more affluent neighborhoods in my ward, they also have not received these services. And I will also say, I have a large demographic of immigrants, non-white immigrants in Ward twelve as well. So we're not just only one pool demographic. And I think we forget that I have a very large amount of Asian immigrants as well because there's there's been some targeting in Ward twelve against them with this pandemic. And it would be disingenuous for me not to represent them too. So.
I understand, I understand.
So, but again, I mean, that's not, that's not, that's general everyone. So in regards to when I communicate these to the appropriate divisions, it depends. In my conversations with the captains, specifically Captain Moore, because again, I'm almost exclusively District One, it's just a, like a heads up, like, hey, this is what's going on. We'll pull some stats. We'll have that conversation. We'll look at trends based on the last thirty days, ninety-one, twenty days, or a year to date.
So does this happen with the resident? Or you just do this work just with the with the police department? Does this happen with the resident? How how do you work that out? How did, how do, how are they secured in knowing that something has happened?
Well,
Is it constant communication through email? I'm just making sure.
Yeah. So how are we ever, how are we ever sure? And how are we ever secure in knowing that our government's working for us, right? Especially with bureaucracy by design being slow. So I do act as the proverbial messenger in that, again, I come from a reference librarian background. So it's just a very, a very, how do we say, common mode, I guess, like, you know, like, you presented me with this, so let me go do the legwork. And I report back or get them in contact. If they, a lot of times, my constituents don't want to do all this sort of shuffling through and whatnot. They want the answers, right? Well, I'm here to assist in providing an answer or helping to form the answer.
Would you not say that's a service?
Well, I would say that all of us, by being elected officials, are inherently public servants. Now, we're having this, this debate about public, uh, elected officials and public administrators and the separation, fundamental separation of the two. But we are servants to to the city in this capacity.
Understood.
As a service.
Understood, understood. So once again, I appreciate it. So did you say you've only had a request for two petitions for speed bumps?
I have had now, okay, so I've had quite a few more speed hump requests.
How many would you say? Would you say like a thousand, like, was it Megan, Alderwoman Green?
Are you asking me to to yield to the Alderman from the fifteenth?
No, no, I'm sorry. Maybe my phone broke up. No, I was saying, uh, do you get like a, like a thousand? Like Alderwoman Green?
So I I will not speak on that because I don't have that number. But I do catalog every single email that I receive, constituent emails. So if you would like a firm number, I will pull a firm number from my, uh, from my data.
It's be happy, it has to be very firm. You can give me like a roundabout, leave me a hundred, two hundred a week. You haven't been an alderperson for six, seven years, but.
Well, give me, give me one, one quick second, Alderman. I do appreciate your patience.
No problem.
Yeah, in my email inbox for speed bumps, looking at every email that I've received, I have approximately twenty-six, we'll round up and say thirty-five emails specifically that mention speed humps. Now, that does not mean that everyone has has consented to or agreed to doing a petition. If they want speed humps, I need them to talk to their neighbors. And in fact, I think quite a few of our problems, not just in St. Louis, but in our country, could be ameliorated if we all of us spoke to our neighbors a little more friendly and a little more frequently. I've only had one, to date, request to actually do the petition. Now, the two that I've mentioned earlier that I've requested speed studies for, those were at my discretion because they were safety concerns, right? They were situations that were severe enough or close to being severe enough that I was uncomfortable to sit by the wayside and not request those. So I made the decision as the representative of my ward to say, I want these speed studies done without a petition and submitted those July twelfth to Mr. Kent Flake, Commissioner, which he forwarded to Jamie, Director of Streets, of course, June fifteenth.
And have they been put in yet?
As of this past Tuesday, pursuant to a conversation with the Director of Streets, as per his email, which he sent to the full board last week or the week prior, I had an additional one, again, for safety purposes, that Jamie himself said, I will, you know, I'm stepping in and saying, we're not doing a speed study. We're just going to put them in. That was on Stein's. Lizette will be receiving speed humps because that's the one where the children were almost hit. And then the one with the deaf neighbor. Am I breaking up? I'm sorry. I, my screen froze. Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Apologies. My screen froze and I wasn't moving. Sorry about that, everyone.
We heard you though.
Yes, the one on Robert, we will be doing a speed study for, and we're also looking at better signage, notifying the public that there is a deaf neighbor on that street, as well as a neighbor who is blind on that same block.
Okay, got you. Well, so seems like you, you know, you put in a request for speed bump, you'll be getting them in like, you know, what, two or three months' time? That that definitely seems to be much, I'm sorry, go ahead.
By the time they're put in, Alderman, it will be about six months from the original request or perhaps closer to four or five. And it's only because there's been this very stark policy shift by Streets Division. So the timing was just right for me as a new elected because the Streets Division very suddenly decided that they would not be abiding by a policy from the slave administration. It is not because of anything I have done that expedited this process. If anything, it's because of something that Alderwoman Tyus from the first, Alderwoman from the first, Tyus, uh, did by presenting this board bill. Otherwise, I would have been in the same exact boat as everyone else where it takes years. And indeed, I do have outstanding requests regarding sidewalk repairs, curb repairs, and speed humps that have been pending for years, just like the rest of the city.
You got thirty-six of them that's been pending for years?
No.
Some of the sidewalks. Just focusing on the speed, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I'm happy to focus on speed humps. So, uh, no, I I don't believe that I have, I can't speak to that many. Alderwoman Grass, whom I succeeded, was very proactive in providing me with a docs box, as I call it, of the projects that she could speak to. However, since she'd only been in office for less, for about nine months, and because my, our predecessor, Mr. Alderman Arnowitz sadly passed away, I have to recreate quite a bit of and and do a lot of my own research in finding these projects and in sort of catching up, if you will.
Got you. Okay, well, I certainly appreciate your, uh, your questions, some of your answers, and I appreciate your willingness to speak.
Oh, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I, Mr. President, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to ask you to speak to Alderwoman Spencer. I would like to have a conversation. We've been talking for a little bit of time now. I just kind of want to point out, and I could probably easily make the same discussion with a few other folks. We come from a different side of town. I mean, that that gets, that that's just what it is. And there are different expectations on aldermen from different parts of town by the constituents that they represent. Some people are not staring at people flying up and down the streets all day long because they have residents that live on the east and west side of the streets, so there are cars out there. And most people aren't just going to fly up and down the street where there is more potential of you hitting somebody's car because the street is more populated. When you have streets that are less populated, when you have long stretches of blocks where there is nothing but open land because there have been buildings that are torn down, where you have cars that are a few on the left, few on the right, because once again, the blocks are unpopulated, that is the the atmosphere that people who have a lead foot utilize to get around in and open up, you know, open up these cars. They they get, you know, and and not to, not to say you can't do it in in small or narrow streets, you know, but it's it's much easier to do it and safer if you're going to speed to speed on the north side of St. Louis. Most of us are not going to chase you. The police not going to chase you. You know, we can't just call our captain and ask for an extra duty. We can't call them and ask them to do an extra round because they are already dealing with shootings and and multiple calls for other things that are unrelated to just the speeding. So when people are asking for a speed hump or they're asking for some type of traffic calming control within the area, that's almost like a police officer being there. Now, let me not get outside of myself and say that that's the police being there because my residents will be like, no, it's not. It's nothing like the police. And it's not. But that's something that gives them some sort of peace of mind that when they ask the alderpersons here in our areas, because they look at us like we should be able to do everything, their action, if you can't put a speed bumper, then who can? We can't tell them, hey, it's been three years and this is the reason why. You know, our people say, well, we can't vote for you when that fourth year come back up because you can't even put in a speed bump. These are the reasons, and 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 rightfully so, people get up and they leave our parts of town sometimes because even the simplest things that they feel like should be simple are out of our control. It's only eleven black aldermen hurt. We get a twelve vote from the president sometimes, you know, he's very fair, I believe. It's unfortunate, and our residents need to know, we need three or four people from, that's not the nor, not from the north side. And I'll just say it flat out, people that are white, and that's okay for us to agree on how important it is for something to get done sometimes on the north side. And we have to ensure that we get three people that agree with what's going on on this side of town that they may not be experiencing. We have some very good folks here on the Board of Aldermen that do vote because they see things from a different perspective sometimes. But if you don't have these same calls and issues within your wards in abundance, sometimes it may, it may really, really help the entire city to listen to the other people who are in a totally different opposite side of town, dealing with the direct opposite of what you're not dealing with on a day-to-day basis. You know, you're talking about opening streets back up in in any parts of your ward. Nine times out of ten, your, your, uh, you know, your your constituents have gotten some peace for some time. Man, now they want to open it back up so they can, you know, let the blocks breathe a little bit. Right now, people are saying we need to close things down and be more and more, have more intimate neighborhoods because we have less population there, you know, there's too much space. So, you know, with that being said, I ain't going to take up too much more time, but I'm I'm not going to let, and from my understanding, what what I feel, we ain't just going to throw the hard work that's been put on this board bill out there like it's, you know, something that is not going to help when nothing has been going the way that we like it to thus far, especially from folks that are, you know, saying, you know, they're discontent with the with the bill. I could, once again, go down the line and ask all these people, they got speed bumps, one way or another, if you got them, we need to find out how. If you don't got them, we need to find out how. Like, tho- those things are still happening. We still ain't got the speed bumps. Some people going to blame the commissioner. Some people blame the administration, which is the reason why I asked. It ain't just the commissioner. It ain't just the administration. It ain't just the process all the time. This is politics. Let's just be very frank and serious about it. Yeah, it's politics. What this does, it takes a little bit of the political process that we all have been fighting through because we all are politicians to some degree. And it takes it off of, you know, our backs and puts it into everybody's hands and gives us that automatic courtesy that we looking for. We want speed bumps, just like if we want to block off the street. You don't argue with nobody about blocking off the street. You just tell them, if it's in your ward, Alderman, fine. This is the same thing. We talking about speed bumps. Now, what it sounded like, somebody trying to protect the bag, now that's getting interesting. Sound like somebody friend is out here making some money off of something. And, you know, that's interesting as hell, man. That's interesting, especially with the speed study thing. Like, that's that's super duper interesting. But either way, however it twists the turn, however it goes, all I'm saying is there's no reason why, just like we petition a block off streets and we go out here and we throw ordinance on blocking the streets off, we could do the same thing, keep our same contractors, work with everybody else to get it done quickly, but do them in bulk, put them all under an actual ordinance, that could be super, you know, more much easier than the actual political process in it all. So, uh, that being said, I support the board bill. It's very, very interesting that people are are complaining about how we put speed bumps up. And they don't have like thousands of cars for the speed bumps. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alderman. The Alderwoman from nineteenth is next. She had her hand up. I think she took it down. So now to the Alderwoman from the eighth for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to speak as a, I mean, I'm not the newest of aldermen, but I am newer to this process. And what, what I am seeing here and what I I think is part of what we're trying to alleviate, but maybe not entirely getting to in this bill in that we we need some transparency. We need clear systems that work for our constituents and for us. When I was first elected, the calls that I was getting from people when there were issues that came up, such as speeding or trees down or refuse or anything, the calls were Um, trees down or refuse or anything, the calls were started with, I didn't vote for you, but. And asking for my help. And I, I have never cared nor wanted to know whether or not folks voted for me. I do know that there are wards in which older persons have used that information as to whether or not they're going to. Address city services for their constituents, and I think that is entirely wrong, and I would hope that none of us support that. Um, but. A, a central citizen service bureau process, the way that it should work for refuse, the way that it should work for forestry. Should alleviate those issues. It takes it away from the elected official and into a centralized administrative system that should work for all of us. Um, I think there's also the, the counter of that, that we've had administration that has said, I don't like you, and so therefore I'm not going to move on your awards. Um, requests, right? So it is that, that political. Pole, that tug of war happens in all of these areas and what I would really love to see is a citywide policy. That determines what types of remedies are available for what types of problems. Traffic is a massive problem. It is the thing I think that we all probably get the most calls about and. Short of physically impeding people in the street, whether that's, um, you know, uh. Roundabouts or shamo pots dropped in the middle of streets that you have to physically stop cars. Um, because the stop signs aren't working, even the speed humps don't necessarily work. Um, so physically stopping people are the only things that are really working. And so. If we're using the speed humps for other things, then great. So maybe we need to amend our policy based on other types of. Traffic calming measures that we know can work, but I would love to see, again, to the, the point of, um, the Alderman from the twenty-eighth and from the fifteenth. That we have a data-based process where folks can, anyone can access the Citizen Service Bureau. They shouldn't have to come through us to do that. They get put in a queue, we get reports of who is in those queues so that we can help advocate for them. But that way, they're not having to contact us directly in order to get their services done. We can use that as a follow-up. We can use that as a check and a transparency tool. But right now, if they're coming, if the CSP is sending them to us, then they can get lost in our email. I, I don't know about y'all, but. Things move to spam without me realizing that they're in spam all the time, and that's a problem when I'm trying to respond to constituent requests. So. How can we have a trustworthy centralized system where requests come in? And then they're processed according to a plan that works for everyone, right? That whether that's, um, a number of. Petitions on a street when it's a residential street or the businesses that are on the street are consulted. But each of us having our own individual process is part of, I think, what slows this down. And then the Streets Department or any of our city services having different processes for how they respond to Aldermanic requests. Versus things that are just coming from the CSP. These are all issues that if we could trust the CSP process worked. Then we wouldn't need all of this Aldermanic influence. Yes, we are here to advocate for our constituents. That is part of our job as their representatives, but. An Aldermanic request shouldn't jump the line because then that pushes the line further back for folks who don't have access to their Alderman or, or who their Alderman doesn't respond to. Um, and this, this should just be a functioning city service. So I don't. I don't disagree with what you're trying to do here in taking this out of just a speed study. Um, I do think that putting it through an ordinance process makes the flexibility needed with potentially changing bus routes. Or um, changes in other neighborhood infrastructure, having to repeal ordinances back through the process. I think this makes the bureaucracy bigger. Um, you know, in a way that's gonna take more time um, to achieve the ends for residents. I do, I mean. I, I've done a traffic study and part of my ward in conjunction with the two other Alder people that it, it worked with. I would have loved for those, those should have gone immediately into a queue for the traffic calming measures that were recommended. But that didn't happen and I didn't realize that I needed to continually ask the Streets Department to fund what we studied alongside them. That's not. That, that shouldn't work that way. Also, if we did the speed study and they have a copy, we should be moving to implement that. Every, you know what I'm saying? So I feel like there are a lot of holes in this and I, I agree that we need to change it. Um, and I, and I respect the work that has been done. I, I apologize, you know, I'm not a part of the Streets Committee and so, um, this was not. A main focus of mine, but it is, it's absolutely a concern and I, I would love to see. I would love to see citywide procedure for how this works. Um, and ways that we can still continue to be a process as representatives or constituents, but not. That we are the sole arbiters of whether or not these things happen because I think that draws in a lot of conflict for us and for our constituents. Um, in a way that is counterintuitive as well. So, thank you.
See, the Alderman from the nineteenth is back. Um, Alderman from nineteenth had your hand up earlier.
That's true. Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members of the board. I just want to make a quick statement because. I kind of agree with everything that's been said by everyone, but I most especially first want to thank the Alder person from the first ward. For addressing this, opening up this can of worms that is just rotten at this point. Uh, we need improvement with the overall process. We need to revamp that entire, a division over there. Uh, we have gotten to a point now where we don't even have a liaison from the Street Department to work with us. I mean, it is just ridiculous. And the prices that we pay for work, when I go out and bid it on my own. It is obscene that we're paying anywhere from four to sometimes eight times what it costs. In the regular commercial market. So there are a lot of things that need to be addressed. And most especially, we have a city that only has three hundred thousand people in it. We have, have a geography that accommodated eight hundred thousand people. So we must amend a lot of things. The street patterns, the speeds. How many one-way streets we have. All kinds of things need to be addressed and none of it is being talked about. At least if it's being talked about, we don't know it. So, uh. I'm pissed a whole lot of times because it's not just streets, it's not just CSP. But everything they say, wait, you gotta talk to the Alderman. Well, that's not true because these departments have. A lot of ability to move forward with services. And um, but that's just been the strategy over the years. This is nothing new. It, it, it really, it's been the strategy over the years. But I wanted to thank her. I'm gonna vote for it because I need to see something happen, but I beg you as the Chair of Streets, let's go further with this. Let's make this thing. More, this department has to be more responsible to the city. I thank you, uh, Mr. President for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the thirteenth, see you have your hand up for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I, like many of my colleagues, echo thanks to the Alderman from the first for working on this. I know that she pulled in the administration, including, of course, the Streets Department operations um, to make, to work on this bill. And I think this bill being introduced in the first place is the reason that we ended up getting. A new policy from the Streets Department about how, um, about how speed humps can be installed now without. A speed study. Uh, and I think in thinking about that, uh, I've been spending some time talking with Director Wilson about this and. You know, for people who are unfamiliar, the speed study, what it looks at is whether eighty percent of people or more are going. At or around the speed limit. So if you have a street that it has twenty percent of people. Going two, three times the speed limit, even if. You know, that, that's, that speed study will say, okay, well, eighty percent of people were going twenty-five, so there's not a problem. And that's not true. That is still a huge problem if twenty percent of the people are going, are going that speed. Um, so I for one. And, and I, I do believe in database decision-making, of course, um, but I, I also do think that. That might not have been the right data-based decision. Um, so. One of the things that, you know, I've been thinking a lot about with the Streets Department is some of the places in the thirteenth ward that need speed humps. They're not necessarily because people are automatically going too fast, but they need something to bring their attention back to the road. So some of the places there I have requests are where there's a big curve in the road. And this person who lives along that car curve, their car's been hit three times. You know, their insurance isn't covering it anymore. Um, they, they want to hump there because they need people, even though that car might be going twenty-five miles an hour or maybe just twenty-six or. Maybe they're part of the twenty percent that's going fifty, but they need that car to slow down so that they don't hit them coming around that corner. Um, and these are streets that, that showed that the speed study didn't show that this hump was warranted, and I would argue that it absolutely is warranted. Um, and so I'm a big fan of the new policy from the Streets Department in which. Aldermen can say, here are the streets that I think that, you know, we have reason for humps, whether that's. Based on a petition, whether that's based on other traffic calming initiatives. For example. Uh, when, when you're going into a neighborhood, there might be multiple entrances to the neighborhood, but often you're coming off a bigger street where the speed might be faster. And so when you turn into that neighborhood, you might keep going that speed. So one of the reasons you might want to hump there. Is so that people recognize that this is a new neighborhood and new, um, a new speed is, is going to be requested. I sort of liken it to the idea of rumble strips along the highway. You know, that's not. Necessarily slow down the truck, but just to let them know, hey, there's, you know, you're, you're drifting, you're changing, something's different. Um, and so, you know, to me, a speed hump isn't necessarily just because. Twenty-five miles an hour, you know, eighty percent of people like, or, you know, more than eighty percent of people aren't going the right speed. Um, so, you know, I, I kind of argue about what data we use to, to install speed humps. Um, you know, I do think that the Streets Department should be making uh, these traffic decisions. Um, but I think that we have all experienced different times where. You know, you're, you work on traffic calming along a street and you're working with the Streets Department. It can be the greatest uh, work relationship. In the world. Um, but you know, if you didn't bring it up as the Alderman, you know, would that have been initiated at all? Um, so I think we have a really interesting role to play as Alder people here. Um, and so all of that to say that you all have changed my mind probably a half a dozen times during this discussion. Um, because I do think a citywide comprehensive plan is absolutely what we need. I do think. Aldermen should be removed from a lot of the traffic decisions, and I say a lot, not all. Because, you know, one of the bills that I have that was first read today was a stop sign at Bates and Leona. Um, neighbors along Bates and Leona have been asking for this stop sign. They tell me for fifteen years. And that, you know, if any of you are familiar with that intersection, you pull out there, it's scary, not, you know, it's a scary intersection. Um. So in coordination with Board of Public Service and the Streets Department, who have been really excellent in this process, we're putting in. Um, some other traffic calming uh, infrastructure, including crosswalks, including some bump outs and center medians. To make the intersection safer from that way. But I can tell you, the residents of my ward were like, that's all great, but. We still want the stop sign. So, you know, there's some times whereas Alder people, you know, were elected to listen to the constituents that we have and. Um, they have desires from their city and they pay taxes and. I understand that there might be times where we need this ordinance. So. You know, like I said, I've been going back and forth because I like the, the Streets Department's new policy. Um, and I think that it's a good thing to be able to request the humps. They, you know, examine whether they have any reason to say no. And then it goes forward. Now, of course, if they say no and you're like. The people in my ward really need this, this, this ordinance gives us that power to put it into place. Um, you know, what I don't know if I, if I understand correctly is if. You know, um, and perhaps the Alderman from the, Alderman from the first would yield to questions, just so I can ask.
All, all the ones from first will yield the questions to the Alderman from thirteenth. You, you're muted, Alderman.
Yes, I will.
All of them from thirteen, please proceed.
Yeah, so my question is if this ordinance gets passed, um, I think I saw the word shall there. So even if the Streets Department says this is a terrible place for a speed hump. Um, this is crazy. Uh, if we have an ordinance passed, it shall be installed. It has to be installed, no matter what they say, if it meets the other, you know. Not on a snow route, not on a bus route requirements.
Yes. Could I go on further?
Oh, please. I mean, I'd love to hear, yes, please. I'd love to hear more.
Not only that, but there is a, a little word in legal jargon called notwithstanding. And what it means is when you pass laws and you even pass laws which the citizens pass things like for our. War capital money, which was supposed to go to each of us, when the mayors insert things with, like the word notwithstanding, which is what the Mayor Cruzon has done. She took our war capital money, even though the citizens had been out and voted for it to go into ward capital. So if you really want to talk about this, there's a way to go around almost every ordinance we have on the books, okay? So for those lawyers on this board, they already, they should if they don't already know that. Um, and it's the magical words and I will show you in our past budgets how Mayor Cruzon. And Mayor Slay took war capital money that should have been in the thirteenth and the first and all these wars with the words notwithstanding. But additionally, I just want to say, if it was really something so horrific, we are not the last words. Even though we consider ourselves legislative last words, because we have something called an executive branch. And that executive branch has veto power and then that veto power could be extended if it was really a bad. Uh, ordinance that you passed, and then you would have to come back here and get nineteen of your friends. So there are already checks and balances. When I'm, you've served for a long time, you know this. But when you haven't or, uh, and I will address some of the other issues that people brought up. Mostly coming from people who have a lot of closed streets in their wards already. Um, and there is nothing that will stop a traffic study from continuing to happen. If uh, we pass this, you still can do a citywide traffic study. And, and then if the, if, are we gonna open up the streets that are closed that that traffic study says is a bad? Idea? Are we gonna remove the speed humps? I think not. So I, what I want you to know is that. The uh, streets that are closed are in the twenty-eighth ward. I was, I lived in the eighth ward when John Coke was the Alderman and closed all our streets at night. When we woke up. They were closed, not Stephen Conway, John Coke. Okay, so I go back a long time. I had the most experience of anybody here about this stuff. And so, uh, when I hear people, seventeenth ward has a lot of closed streets, eighteenth ward. So when you talk about it, um. Doing a complete traffic study, that's kind of like, uh, taking birth control pills when you're eight months pregnant, okay? Cause the problem is that we already have a lot of people who are, already have their traffic um, commings put in place. So when they say to me, oh, well, this is not a good idea, open all your streets back up, okay? Get rid of all your humps, everything that you have, take them out of your alleys. And again, the only reason that the Street Department has addressed this issue is because I did put this board bill up. And then I went and took the, went to them and challenged them and said, this is bull. You, this need to pay nine hundred dollars for a study, that was used politically. If we don't put something in place. The next administration may not be as friendly and we may go right back to what was happening before. This way, this gives us some leeway to go around if, if it's just a political administration deciding, well, I don't like the Alderman from the ninth. Or the Alderman from the first, and so we're not even going to respond to them. We're just not gonna do anything. This gives us an opportunity. Now, the mayor can still veto it. So there's, but then the mayor would have to show his or her hand. Um, as it was, we just sat around for years wondering what the heck is happening? Why was I told these speed humps were okay, but they were not being implemented or I was not answered at all? This is why I came up with this process and there are other ways to do it. And, and, and as I want to say again, realistically, I don't need this for me. They have given me every speed hump I asked and said that to me as a way for me not to go forth with this. I don't like that American, I call it throw a rock and hide a hand. That you tell your street director not to reply to certain people, that other people don't get an answer or other people are told. No on ten, twenty or thirty of their applications, that you come up with this thing about you gotta pay nine hundred dollars for a speed hump. Um, which was ridiculous and you did not. And under just a very little questioning, they gave that idea up. So. This is just a way that we have some say-so about just what you said, if I really still need that stop sign. Um. And here's the other thing, if you don't want speed humps, don't get any. Just say no. My own street is a street that is closed. When I started putting speed humps in, uh, there were people on my street said, well, I want some. I said, no. They said, why not? I said, because we have our street closed. Let's address the people whose streets and alleys need it. I got elected to say yes and no. Um, and so I, I do, I, and I give them a rational answer. And when I did, they said, okay, Alderman, you are right. Cause we hardly get any traffic down our street now that it's closed, okay? So that's what we're elected for. And I want to say this whole thing about, oh, we're going around. So that's what we're elected for. And I want to say this whole thing about, oh, we're going around, uh, doing things we shouldn't.
All, all along from the first, you, when you, when you
Alright, I'm sorry, you are correct. You are, I'm sorry, Mr. President. You're absolutely correct, I am so sorry.
Oh, that's alright.
Thank you very much, I'm finished.
Alright, uh, okay, yeah, the Okay, Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. Very quickly, uh, I commend Alderman from the first working this. I've talked to Director Wilson. He's all in favor of this, he's, uh, I, as an Alderman, you're, and Alderman, you're, you're paid, you're elected to listen to your constituents. They call you, you answer them, you take care of it that way. I think the, the real problem might be with speeding is, we need to increase police pay about twenty-five percent to get more police officers on the street, so they can take care of traffic. King's Highway is like Interstate forty-four, most times through my ward. Uh, I, I caution people not even to walk on the street, you have no idea how dangerous it could be when people are, they have no fear of getting a ticket. I'm for putting the red light cameras back in anything, we need something to, to do this. So as an Alder person, uh, who's been here quite some time, uh, I, I think that we should go forward with this and, and listen to our constituents, put them where they want, put them where they need, they live on that street, they go out and take a look at the street when they call you. You know, get, get away from the iPad, go away from the computer, take a walk down the street, knock on the door and say, is this the problem? And, uh, I agree, thank you very much, Alderman from the first.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Alderman from the tenth. Uh, I think all, it was Alderman from the twenty-first and then Alderman from the twelfth.
Hey, thank you, uh, Mr. President. I won't be long, I'm gonna be straightforward. I agree mostly everything my colleague from the third ward has said. But in the midst, as he was talking, he was debating with the Alderman from the twelfth. Uh, and the Alderman from the twelfth said, I have more affluent neighborhoods than most. Completely disrespectful to say, you don't have more affluent neighborhoods, you just have more white neighborhoods. You have more white, not affluent, for you to say that when your ward is sixty percent, seventy percent white with some other mixed races, and you say it's affluent over a neighborhood that's ninety percent and eighty percent black, completely disrespectful. And I truly believe he didn't mean what he said, it just came out wrong, but I was definitely gonna correct that. And again, I agree with my colleague from the third ward, I'm mostly what he's saying, and my colleague from the nineteenth ward. That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth ward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, to respond to that quite quickly, I use the word affluent, not influence, and affluent by that means I was referencing my median income, right? So, uh, the median income in South City is slightly higher than other wards. So if I misspoke, or if I, uh, mispronounced affluent, I do apologize to the Alderman from the twenty-first and to this, uh, to this board. But what I was meaning to say was that that is a more affluent, uh, ward, which I believe the data would back up. Um, but, uh, I would also like to say that an added layer of protection that we have of checks and balances is if we were truly in a situation where we were trying to authorize by ordinance a speed hump that our civil servants felt posed a greater risk than it did a benefit. Um, they could just, I mean, they have the, the protection of the civil service just to not observe it or do it. So I mean, there, I agree that policy is not a be all end all. There's also enforcement of a policy and adherence to a policy, and they would be within their power just not to install a speed hump if they truly felt it posed a risk to the public. So that's just to piggyback off the Alderman from the first, whom I would welcome to correct me if that is incorrect. But I just wanted to say, in the spirit of being able to hold two truths at the same time, that based on my experiences with the Streets Division, Jamie Kent and our civil servants have been absolutely incredible in certain areas, uh, especially with Hampton, with King's Highway, with these other major product, uh, projects. Um, our street lighting division is incredible. They are very successful in certain areas, and this meeting has felt somewhat like a bash Jamie Wilson or bash other members of our Streets Division at times and unintentionally. So I just wanted to say, based on my own experiences as a new, uh, nascent Alderman, that I have had very good experiences with streets, just not in the realm of speed humps. And that I'm very thankful for those good experiences, but also frustrated by my experiences regarding speed humps specifically. So that is all, Mr. President, I wanted to, wanted to be proactive and, uh, thinking what deserves gratitude and calling out what deserves or has frustration. So thank you, Mr. President and the board.
Thank you, Alderman from the twelfth. Um, Alderman from the first, you now will recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, just to address the Alderman from the twelfth, I'm not bashing city employees because they get caught between, but I just want to say me, they get caught between a rock and a hard place. Cause what happens is the administration that I put that blame on. And it was the administration, even Alderman from the fifteenth said that certain of us were out of favor, so that administration didn't acknowledge us. That's why I started working on this. I actually introduced several versions of this board bill. Um, when the Alderman from the twenty-second was the, uh, president, I mean, was the Chair of Streets. And he actually arranged the meeting that I met with, uh, the Board of BPS President and the Director of Streets, and we hashed out some things, and that's why this board bill came to be. Um, I want to just say again, nothing stops a citywide study from happening. I want it to happen, let it be a citywide study, get to work on it. But while you're talking about a citywide study, I, as a representative who got elected to represent my community, cannot just sit around and say, well, I hope they get to the citywide study one of these days. That's not a good way to represent people. There have been, there are single issues that get people elected to Congress, to the Board of Aldermen, state legislatures. Uh, there are people whose children got killed, and so they have a gun safety issue that they ran for and won Congress. In my community, I ran on the basis that I would represent their interests. Uh, the Alderman from the tenth took part of my thunder because what I was going to say is that you don't live on the streets that other people do. These people live on these streets and they are, uh, encountering all kinds of speed traps and things like that. And I actually do go out, I know my streets, I've represented a lot of them for thirty years. I go out, I check when they say they want something. As I said before, my petition process is arduous because, but everybody doesn't have to do that, and I didn't put that, uh, 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 in the bill the way I do it, but I would always suggest to newer Alderpeople, but if you use this petition process, you will, uh, then get a good buy-in. People feel empowered when people are driving down their streets and you put a stop sign up, a speed hump, you turn the street around, there are all kinds of traffic commings, you put, you close the street. That empowers them, they feel like that they have a representative form of government that I hear people talk about all the time. But then when we want to do something like this, now they're saying, well, no, no, let's make this holistic. Well, I wouldn't be doing this if this was holistic. Right now, we do not have the proper amount of police. Um, I have written up a suggestion that has taken traction and, and I've sent it to the Director of Public Safety. I've sent it to the mayor's office, I've sent it to the police chief, and, um, um, I suggested, and people, I've sent it to the Director of Personnel. Since we don't have enough police and we need a traffic division, couldn't we hire the, uh, police officers that have retired, that live in our city to work part-time? And then they could be our traffic division, you know, even if we got ten, twenty, or thirty people that signed up, let's have a traffic division, because right now we don't. So when people drive down the street, or they run red lights, or they, uh, run stop signs, at which I also represent a great portion of King's Highway, it is fearful to, to inch out to King's Highway. And it's no matter if it's a school stop or a school, uh, or a traffic light, they purposefully now just drive the traffic light. So it's a big game because there's no repercussions. So we need to find a way that we can address this speeding. Since I can't have police officers, the way that I've thought, found the best way to address this speeding is with traffic calming measures. Speed humps, street closings, I'm not a big streets, uh, stop sign fan. The Alderman from the twenty-third is a champ in that, but I don't try to stop him putting, uh, stop signs up. Um, even though I have some concerns about, um, um, emissions from cars, it's because I don't know the streets of the twenty-third ward like he does. I'm not asking anybody to, who does not want speed humps, don't put them in there. This doesn't say you have to put speed humps in. You have to put stop signs or any kind of thing. This says, this gives people the alternative who want to do it, to do it a different way and not to leave it in the hands that if the next administration comes in and you're still on this Board of Aldermen, that they don't get to put things in like, say, uh, we're gonna charge you nine hundred dollars for a speed study. It's real simple. If you don't want it, don't do it. Put on your big girl pants and your big boy pants and just say no to the constituents. I, I would suggest that you say no with an explanation, not just no. Okay, this board bill allows you to ask for a speed study, but it's not required. It, this allows them to charge nine hundred dollars for a speed study. Uh, the, um, someone just said, policy change by the mayor now, that is a good policy change. Will the next mayor have a different policy change? Hump, slow down traffic. I actually have put a great, almost all my neighborhoods have most of their streets that are residential that are not closed. Not the secondary streets such as Ugl, not the, um, main streets such as King's Highway, Union, but most of the little residential streets that needed them, they almost all have them, or have already been approved. So have they been successful wildly? I have triple streets. The fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, I have three streets that don't even have a break, so you drive from King's Highway straight to Union. So they had been almost, uh, you know, every week I was getting two, three, four pictures, emails, whatever, from one of those streets, more than that, saying that, look at my car, they have torn my car up, they hit my, uh, door, they hit, several kids got hit. And so I, um, put those three in first. Uh, and since I put those speed humps in, I have not had one call from those people. I'm their hero almost because I was able to put in speed humps. But that, those speed humps should have been in years ago, but was held up because I wasn't in favor. That is ridiculous. So there were people who got their cars, uh, uh, run into because of a political standings of a mayor. And the mayor still could veto, I'm telling you again, but at least that, I don't like that throw your rock and hide your hand. So if you veto my bill, then do it. I want to see you do it. I will have already sent out a petition. I will have already got buy-in, and then when the mayor vetoes it, then I'm gonna send them right to the mayor and say, you go talk to the mayor because he or she vetoed this bill that you, the constituents and the people that live on that ward, on that street want. We are legislators, legislators. It is absolutely our duty to bring this type of legislation. It is, it addresses a problem, and the problem is a lack of traffic police. This addresses a problem. If you really want to, if you, if we're gonna start looking at how hard we do speed humps, we might want to really look at the real stop sign bill. Because if we look at the real stop sign bill, you might find out you're really not supposed to be passing those stop sign bills the way you are. So, um, just a word from people who've been around for a long time. The control of where you reside, in order to be able to get your quiet enjoyment of where you live, is important to everyone. No matter what your socioeconomic status is, whether you're poor, or rich, black or white, everyone wants a quiet enjoyment of where they live. They elect us to be their voice and to look at legislation to get this kind, um, when, when they have problems. This is not a problem that is in just North St. Louis, it's not a problem that is in South, is all over the city. There are some communities that because of their prior Aldermen, their streets are all closed off, so you can't do that. So you may not see that necessity because you already got your streets closed. Because I wanted to, I'm a fact, a data-driven person, I asked for a list of where our closed streets are. It is so interesting that many other people who are opposing this bill is because they have all their streets closed. So they don't see the need for this because they don't have to worry about it. As I said earlier, I lived in the eighth ward when John Coke was the Alderman, and he came through one night without any advice from us. And he closed all the streets because I lived on Clem, one, one block from the garden and one block from botanical, uh, from the park. And he closed all those streets that run down, uh, Tower Grove from Magnolia over to, I want to say Shaw, and then a couple of streets, and when you went under the underpass, and he closed them at Grand the same way. And all of a sudden, we just could not get in and out of our neighborhood, we got used to it. Now, there have been, now Stephen Conway came along, and now the Alderwoman from the eighth. You are perfectly willing, uh, able to open those streets if, back up if you want to. I don't know what your constituents say, but the streets that I have closed, if you come in and say you're gonna open them back up, they will hurt you, okay? Same thing about the speed humps. The speed humps are not a perfect solution. They're also not permanent. They are not permanent. If it becomes something that is a problem, they can be removed. And, and, and as the Alderman from the twelfth said, if it was really a problem, um, administrations have a way of slowing down the installation of certain things that you need. I, I sat by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth ward when I first came back here, and he, it still is searing in my mind that he talked about these trees that he had appropriated, the money he appropriated so many years ago, and it had not been, um, done all these years later. We are finding out as the Chair of the Streets, I have already, um, notified many of you all, we have a problem with fifty-fifty sidewalk, but that's not all that we have a problem. We got some big problems in the Street Department with towing, with trash, with a lot of things. We're gonna be having a lot of investigation and even, um, not just fifty-fifty sidewalk money, but some other monies. Um, so we will, uh, be addressing those issues because we as legislators, that's what we're supposed to do. But today, my sole reason for introducing this board bill is so that more Aldermen can have their own say in what happens in their community. And again, you are elected to represent that community, and if anybody wants a citywide study, they should do it. And they should continue, and then we'll see if there's some places that need to be opened up or shouldn't have them. But we can't wait forever to see if it's gonna happen again. The other thing, is this real board bill is your, um, decision that you don't want it passed. I'll come back with a board bill that just includes the wards that want it passed, okay? That's what we did with, when we went to Conservation District. Um, when Conservation District was first, um, in, um, started, a lot of, none of the black Aldermen wanted it. They always, they were scared about zoning and code enforcement, so they didn't do it. When I was a young Alderperson in ninety-one, I came and I did it at, uh, and it was a big risk to me, and it was a lot of, uh, controversy around it, but my community, we had had ten or twelve meetings, they wanted it, and we did it. We then added it ward by ward, that's what they were doing. So if you don't want it in your ward, I don't need to push it down your throat, I'll come right back with one for the wards that want it. But for the wards that want it, we should not have to sit around and wait to see when a study is gonna be, uh, done. I actually put this on the informal calendar because there are some people that said that about the study. So I waited for the study. It would appear to me that if it really was something that was gonna happen during this time, it should have gotten started so that they could say, hey, Alderwoman, can you hold that on the informal calendar a little longer while we do this study? It has not been done, so I'm not going to sit back and say, I'm gonna wait to some unknown time of when a study will be done. Um, people talked about the Citizen Service Bill. I was here before there was the Citizen Service Bill. Citizen Service Bill was put together by a former mayor as a friend, favor for a friend of his. It has been a bane of my existence, um, because it doesn't work real well in a lot of our communities. Um, the former person who was the head of, uh, NIS, NIS and, um, the Citizen Service Bill was a Dottie McDowell, she was Dottie Pennington McDowell. She even was published in the paper talking about how it takes three to four more days for something to be addressed in North St. Louis than it does in South St. Louis. Um, I have been writing letters to Ms. Owens, essence Owens, who is the, uh, person in head of Citizen Service Bureau now, about all the problems I have with my community when they try to use Citizen Service Bureau. I started when we used automatic requests. I love it to this day, it gets things done. We had triple kits, we sent it directly into the, uh, to the head of the department. They had so many days to respond to you. I sent one to the resident, I kept one, and, um, the, uh, department had to respond. Things got done. Now they will go on Citizen Service Bureau and say, addressed. What does addressed mean? It could mean any, um, number of things. So I have no faith in the Citizen Service Bureau, and I also know that its origin. And it does not work in my part of the city, so I still write up multitudes. I've always done three to five hundred a year of Citizen Service requests, because that's how I get the things done in my ward and I can track it. Now, would I like to not do that and just have the leisure of, uh, being a legislator? Yes, but that's just not realistically what happens in my community. Yes, but that's just not realistically what happens in my community. And for those people who say, well, oh, why you do, why don't you just wait till it gets better? No. I'm not waiting for it to get better because it hasn't gotten better. I I was successful in two thousand and one in that and and slowing down the uh leaving of middle-class black people. So they tore my ward up and now I'm down there in the bottom with everybody else of people leaving. Because when you destroy communities and you don't give them service and they feel like that they don't have any say so of 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 what happens in their community, if you have any money at all, you get out of there. So the big population loss is black middle-class people. So you should ask, what did the city do to do that? Because I got proof, not you talking about data. I got data to show you. The city purposely tore my community up so the black middle-class people could leave. They don't do that in your wards. A lot of you all are sitting fat and happy because you get stuff that we don't. Now, I don't wanna make it race because it wa- it wasn't a race thing at all. It is how do we as alderpeople have a way to access getting a service when we have been had games played with us? This was the best way. I didn't just go about saying I'm gonna write it up. I went and met with BPS. I went with the uh and mess with the director of streets. We actually, I've been um developing a checklist so that we can have a uniform checklist for all street closures, traffic calming. We've been working on that together, which I put my time into it. So I don't want it to be something willy-nilly without thought. But um at the end of the day, we are legislators. We have a right to say yes or no. We have a right to sponsor legislation. We can use the magic words, notwithstanding whatever ever the traffic calming legislation is and pass it out anyway. I didn't want it to be that way. I wanted to be something that everybody knew about, when the streets committee could talk about. Um if there was something that the uh BPS or the police or the fire or even the residents had some really concerns about um with our new rule um for our uh for the Board of Aldermen, now everybody is allowed to come speak. Those who know me that at my committees, I always would allow people to come speak, even if it was something that I was opposed to, I was adamantly and still opposed Proposition D, but I still allowed people to come and speak at infinitum so that they will feel included. This is what this is. This is an inclusion for everyone who wants to get speed humps done in their community. I believe that it is a uh a very good way to address this problem. And then if we come up with a better solution, there's nothing permanent, including street closures, speed humps or shamo pots or street signs or one-way streets that dead end. None of those things are permanent and can be changed if we finally do get a a comprehensive plan. But while we do not have one, this is something that has been very good. And I don't put a one or two speed humps. I put enough so that you cannot get a lot of speed up. And so then it becomes a quiet street again. Also, remember these speed humps can be put in alleys and I do already know where they have been put in alleys from some of the people who are opposing this measure right now. They already have them in their alley. So um when you make your decision, make it holistically. Uh thinking about, do you want this? Do you wanna be on the board if you're not in favor and then you have this uh policy change? Do you want a policy that gives you a path to having a clear um um open um way to apply for speed humps? Not being the end to all in because as I said before, although we forget it, just because we pass legislation doesn't mean that the mayor that's in office cannot veto it. So there is still a check and balance with the legislative and executive branch. And um Mr. President, members of the board, I request uh that board bill, what is it, forty? Be passed out with a due pass re- recommendation and um I would request a roll call because the alderwoman from the fifteenth wanted to make sure that there was a roll call.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by all one from the first, seconded by the all one from twenty seventh uh that we perfect board bill number forty. Mount Clark, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Hi.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Hi.
Alderman Bosley?
Hi.
Alderwoman Evans?
Hi.
Alderman Page? Alderman Page?
Hi.
Thank you. Alderwoman Iglesia? Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice? Alderman Gunther?
Hi.
Alderman Bommer?
Hi.
Alderwoman Martin?
No.
Alderman Stevens?
Pass.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Hi.
Alderwoman Howard?
Hi.
Alderwoman Green?
No.
Alderman Odenberg?
Hi.
Alderwoman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Hi.
Alderwoman Davis?
Hi.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Collins Mohammed?
Hi.
Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vacaro?
Hi.
Alderman Orion?
Hi.
Alderman Cole?
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Hi.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Daniel, my brother.
Hi. Alderwoman Navarro? No. President Reed?
Hi.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Stevens?
Hi.
Alderwoman Peel?
Hi.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you, hi. Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Boyd? Twenty I votes, four no votes, and two voted present.
I vote staying emotional, all the woman from the first and perfected board bill number forty.
That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
Dispense with line item uh seventeen. Third meeting, part of engrossment.
Board Bill thirty nine as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Martin and ordinance adopting the Uniform Plumbing Code twenty fifteen edition in full except it conflicts with the changes thereto contained herein as the plumbing code of the city of St. Louis repealing ordinance six nine two five five and contain the penalty clause, separability clause, savings clause, and an emergency clause and a codification clause.
All women from the eleventh, you recognize on third reading, file passes for it, go thirty nine as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to third read and finally pass for Bill thirty nine as amended.
It's been moved by all the women from the eleventh. Entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about all the women from the eighth. Uh all one from eleven, please proceed.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. President, um. Sorry, uh not to belabor our meeting today, um but again, this is just updating the current code that we've had um for or that we've operated off uh for a long time. I believe it's the safest. It also um ensures that we do have a board made up of city residents who are also contractors. Um and with that, um I'd like to uh proceed. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, any further discuss? All one from the all one from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the alderwoman from the uh eleven.
All one from the first, please proceed.
I'm sorry, did you say I could proceed? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um Alderwoman, um I want, I'm I'm gonna ask questions about page fifty four of ninety one of the bill. Basically, as it uh pertains to the Board of Examiners for Master Plumbers, um do we currently have such a board?
Uh yes, I believe so.
Okay, and do you know who serves on that?
Um I couldn't list off the names, but I do know that it is uh made up of plumbers who are also residents of the city of St. Louis.
Okay, and so to be, from what I'm looking at here, does this board bill change? Anything about how you can sit on the uh Board of Examiners?
I don't believe so. I believe it's staying consistent with what we've had.
Okay, and um so you say you don't know specifically uh who uh sits on that uh board? Uh but do you know if it is a mix with black and white people representing the the board?
Um I have been told, um I haven't looked up, sorry, my computer is doing some weird update, of course, right now. Um I have been told um that it is majority minority um on that board.
Majority minority?
That is what I've been told.
Okay, um so but you don't, you don't really know. That's what somebody told.
I haven't looked up um in talking uh with some folks on there. I haven't looked up the uh you know, I haven't Googled or looked up, you know, any actual um I mean, I don't, I don't have, you know, I don't have their record of what they filled out as any sort of ethnicity, if that makes sense, or race.
I understand. Are there any women on the board? Do you know?
Um I don't believe so.
Okay, and um do you know the requirements to be a master plumber?
Um I I believe that you have, that you are a licensed uh plumber and um there are a variety of ways to get there.
But it's more than just a licensed plumber. A master plumber is much more than a a a a licensed plumber. I I've been doing rehab for a lot of years and that is a, that's the up the steps, okay? Just so that we can make it kind of plain.
So many um hours um that the state uh requires for licensure.
And um with the hours, then you also have to do, um so you become what? I think the steps are journeyman, apprentice, journeyman, and write up the steps like that. Isn't that correct?
Um yes, I believe so. I don't know. I think um there are difference. Um like I know for electricians, people throw around, oh, he's a master electrician and there's really um not necessarily, there's, that's not really a thing. Um but uh yes, I know there are so many, you know, there's apprenticeship requirements um and not set forth by the state and there are um so many hours required.
And um is there any way for you to become a a master plumber or all these steps without going through the unions?
Um yes, I believe so.
And how would that be?
Um just you can do a certified apprenticeship program. It doesn't have to be a union program. There are other places that uh that um do uh that type of training.
And um
Or you can be a contractor and run, you know, have um apprentices.
You can have apprentices, but how do you become a master? You don't have to go through the union to become a master plumber.
Um my understanding is no. Um and again, we have uh, you know, other trade programs and training schools.
Okay, and does this board bill change any of that?
Um not to my knowledge, it just keeps it consistent with what we have, what we've had.
And do you know how in your um research or just because you're appearing this bill, do you know how many uh master plumbers we have that are African-American or women?
Um I do not know in the state of Missouri or the city of Missouri um how many uh we have, but um I just, I know it comes down to, you know, how many hours and apprenticeship programs.
Okay.
So I think you have to be a cer- I do think you have to be a certain age too. I could be wrong about that, but I believe you have to have, have to be a certain age.
Um I don't know that about the age requirement. I think that that would be legal. I think if you get all the time in there, well, of course you will be that age that you started doing it. I think the requirement.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we have an age for like a driver's license or whatever.
We don't wanna throw that in there.
I do think it's pretty young, but um yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, a certain hours um and a certain age and um there are a variety of ways. Like I said, there are a variety of paths you can get there. I mean, I know like there are technical colleges that um that have that sort of, there there are sort of programs as well.
Okay, and um you didn't, so is I, and I read this thing, a hundred and ninety-one pages of it. And so a lot of the stuff uh requires a master plumber. And how I really got, uh I told you last time when we went down about my experience when I was the chair of public safety, um Mr. Triplet coming to me and wanting to get rid of the fourteen tons and less that didn't require the unions that uh and when I went to speak to the uh African-American contractors, they all said if you get rid of that, that would hurt us greatly. And while I was gone, they did get rid of it and it has hurt them greatly. Um and I always refer to those kind of things as in um ordinances as we got things that say are overtly racist and we have other things that are covertly racist. And overt says no Negroes allowed, no black people allowed, no women allowed, no gays allowed, and it's very overt and you know it. The covert is that we bury stuff into documents that are a couple of hundred pages in which we have all these requirements that a lot of black people or women or whoever can't make without going through certain people and the gatekeepers almost always are white men um and don't allow that to happen. And um I was watching um sixty minutes this uh past uh Sunday as they pay tribute to the nine-one-one firefighters and all, my heart broke for them and I thought about it. But the other thing as an African-American woman that I saw was that the firefighters were predominantly white males. And they talked about that they passed it down from generation to generation, from brother to father and on and on and on. And so people would say, well, that's not racist. It is when you had laws in effect that prevented people from being that grandfather or that uncle or whatever. So systemic racism doesn't always rear its ugly head with a no whatever allowed. It embeds itself into society so that society thinks that's okay. Um when I came here as the first female attorney at the board, there was a male attorney who said to me um who told me something that was wrong in the bill. And when I said that wasn't true, and he said, I'm not used to women being able to read the contracts. I'm not used to women lawyers being down here. And I said, get used to it. So I, when I see all you female lawyers down here, I'm very happy because that's how you uh you break the get, the glass ceiling is that you do it and then other people come along and do it. What you, sometimes you have to be careful though. Sometimes people who write uh ordinances and board bills that are specifically great for them also put that ceiling back on tighter or it has uh unattended or maybe intended consequences. So when I see all these things of uh that require master plumbers, it always sets me on um notice because I I I do a lot of work and I try to find black uh contractors because since I raise hell about it, it's my responsibility uh in doing rehab that I look for them and I can't find them. I know one in the city and I don't, I've been looking all over for them and I call organizations, I'm familiar with Moken, I call somebody looking for them. So when I see something sprinkled with, you have to be a master plumber and I look at the process, which is a little different than what you explained. It puts me on edge because that's a way to keep people out. Um if you have the gatekeepers that are all white males, that's a way to keep people out. I just had this conversation with the street department because we had them come before our committee, all white males. And I said to Jamie Wilson, I said, in my thirty years since I've been here at the board, I've never had but one female, Deanna Vineker, be uh be either the director or any of the commissioners. Now, white men may not think that that's a a problem, but for me as a black female, that is a problem. And I have expressed it to mayor after mayor and I expressed it to Mr. Wilson, not as a criticism, but the fact that he didn't even notice. You don't notice that everybody looks like you, just like you and that that's a problem. But I've been hearing it for thirty years from the uh people who work in the street department about the racism that goes on there and how badly they are treated. Much as I've, I hear from black contractors about how we pass these big, large bills um that are not in our best interest. Um and it just doesn't go to race. It also goes to our financial pocket. I did call Frank Oswald to speak to him because I did believe that the alderman from the twenty-third ward had a much better bill. had a much better bill that was supported by the people who have to implement it. And so, he sent me, uh, a, a little document called "The Economic Impact of the International Plumbing Code", and again, I kind of got that, because a few years ago, I got a new dishwasher, and it was just a basically moving, trading out my old dishwasher for the new, and it was already piped and plummed, so you really just had to turn off the hot, sh, sh, hot and cold water, and change, take the piping off, and put the new dishwasher on, and connect it. But I had to have a master plumber to do that under our code, which I thought was absolutely ridiculous, because I could do it myself. So why would I have to do a master plumber? Because a master plumber costs a lot more money to have those things done. So why, and why did that happen? I started calling Frank, Oswald, and other people, because our code, which was done by a, uh, private interest group, the pipe fitters and plumbers, and is, was different than a great majority of the people.
Oh, both, both, uh, both types.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, you can talk over me. You answered my question, and now I'm talking, and then I'll ask you another question, but I, you, please do not interrupt me, thank you. Um, a great majority, uh, of, uh, the things that require a master plumber, a good majority of them, you really don't need them, and when you put those things in, you, what you do is you, um, in, you increase the cost of doing things. So we had to pay for a master plumber, and we had to look for one, and that's what really started me on the, uh, journey of looking at these board bills and asking the question, are they purposely exclusionary? Or they're so busy looking out for their own best interests that they don't know it's exclusionary, or what? But we were able to find one master plumber who had to put it in, and we had to pay a hundred and something more dollars to put in a simple switch out of a dishwasher. Sprinkled throughout this, uh, board bill, there are things that talk about what has to be done. And so, besides it having a racist impact for me, um, not to mention sexist, I do know a few black women plumbers now that I've, uh, had, uh, a chance to, uh, incur or run into, because we look for them actively. Um, but, um, when, I don't understand why we would be going for something that's so different than what the people who have to, uh, implement our building code think is the best interest for us. Um, so, um, for that reason, and others that have already said, because we've been here a very long time, I am not going to support this, I'm going to, uh, also write up to the ma, I'm gonna write up a report to the mayor, pointing out all these instances of how it, uh, cost us money, and how it prevents, uh, uh, black people from participating. And I did get that one little letter from Mr. Scales Plumbing, um, saying he was supporting it, but I failed to see where he said that he was a master plumber even, so that was interesting to me. And I only got it today, and I had made my, um, opposition known, and had been talked, went out and talked to, uh, several different organizations about it, and, um, everybody had apprehension that I talked to about it. And so, um, for Mr. Scales to send this to me at the, at this last minute, or to the mayor, and then it become part of something, is, um, not impactful for me, because if he really had a good argument, reach out to me, I'd have that conversation with you, but I did not get it, and I am not going to support it, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the city of St. Louis, both on a race basis, but also on a pocketbook basis. Um, because this study that Mr. Oswald gave to us talked about, it cost him substantial when we use this code versus the code that he wanted to, uh, have done. And so, for those reasons I've stated, I'm not going to support it, and I'm gonna ask for a roll call.
Thank you, Alderman from the first, Alderman from nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and I'm sorry I got a background. I, I'm, I'm, uh, doing a couple of things at the same time. I just want to simply say that I am still against this bill. Uh, I'm still against this bill, and I also know that the proper, uh, consideration was not given, and, um, the way they stalled having meetings for over two years with the appropriate sin, city entities and boards that were put together to evaluate this, I still have problems with the union and its, uh, appropriateness in trying to recruit with us and, and giving the ability for people to have the number of hours that they need to become master plumbers, which has nothing to do with the code that we're talking about, but we got issues, okay? And when we don't listen to the people who take care of our day-to-day business, which is the building division staff, then you are not being responsible to the citizens. Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Right, um, Alderman from, Alderman from the third.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I also want to add, um, I don't say too long with this, but, um, we all, every single day, uh, reach out, well, not every single day, but for the most part, um, every month, I would, I would hope most of us have to deal with the building division in some capacity. And, um, you know, a lot of those folks, especially of the director, they've been there for a very long time, and it's very responsive. They deal with, um, uh, most of the city's, uh, business when it comes down to deconstructing or re-constraining, renovation, any type of things that we're deal, doing, when we're dealing with business, I mean, our business building, um, or improving the city in some way, we're utilizing our building division. Um, and if we have folks that are in the building division saying that we need to take a, you know, a better look at this thing, I, I definitely think that would be within, uh, our best interest to do so. I don't think that, uh, not having the support of the building division, uh, you know, on paper, or, or, you know, especially with them speaking against it and having a totally separate deal, um, that they presented, well, not necessarily presented, but was presented to us with the favor from the building division. Um, you know, maybe we should be taking some things out of that bill, putting them in this, we're not sure how that would look, but, um, passing it and still not having the support we've had, you know, multiple months, I believe, we've been off since we've been out of session, that those things could have been talked about, brought to the table, and at least got the building division on board. Since we are back in session, maybe that's something that should be happening, but I couldn't consciously, um, vote yes on this particular bill, knowing that, once again, our building division, um, uh, is, is, is not in support of it on, uh, not necessarily in full support, but not in support in general right now at this moment, so, you know, with that being said, uh, you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the left, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm gonna keep this, uh, real brief. Uh, we, we've had extensive conversation on this, uh, both in meetings and outside of meetings. Uh, this has support both from the unions and from, uh, folks who are not in unions. Uh, the idea that we haven't done due diligence on this is, is kind of absurd to me. Uh, we spoke for hours on this during perfection. Um, it, it came out of committee, where we also debated it for quite some time. Uh, it's, it's been debated ad nauseam, uh, and it, we, we need to move forward with this. Uh, but if the Alderman from the eleventh would yield for one question.
Alderman from the eleventh, will you yield for one question to Alderman from the twenty-fourth? It may be a compound, it may be a compound. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, please proceed.
So, uh, I, I was doing some digging, and do you know the racial makeup of the Plumbing Review Board?
Um, it is my understanding, and again, I haven't had, you know, folks fill out their, um, race or ethnicity, but it's, um, one hundred percent African-American.
Okay, that, that was my understanding from, from some of the digging that I did, that a hundred percent of the folks on that board are African-American folks. Uh, so there is, uh, some, some, uh, additional stopgap there, uh, and, uh, thank you for that, Alderwoman, and with that, I will yield my time.
Right, all right, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the eleventh, you're now recognized close.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, yes, I, uh, you know, I'm always looking for a compromise, I feel like I, uh, try to work with my colleagues. Um, unfortunately, we are talking about two different types of curriculum, so it's not necessarily something that we can amend and add, and these two curriculums really can't coexist, um, but I do think this is the, um, there's nothing wrong with going, um, with what we think is the most quality, and what is recommended to us by the Plumbing Review Board, um, that, um, is, uh, made up of local contractors here in St. Louis. Um, and, uh, the, the sponsor of the other bill handled, um, those committee hearings, because he is the Chair of Public Safety. Um, I do believe he gave a very, uh, fair hearing process to, to both bills, um, but I don't think it would behoove him to not allow testimony, um, that favored the other bills. So I'm a little confused in that, in that talking point, that, um, people weren't allowed to attend or come, um, to the hearings. Um, so, I, I do think that, um, this has been thorough, um, and I understand, um, uh, exactly what Alderman from, Alderwoman from the first, um, is saying, and it's, I, I'm not, you know, I want to be conscientious of that, but again, um, you know, I have a, uh, sixteen-year-old stepson who came home with different, uh, career options and different classes that are, you can, career readiness, and, um, one of those was, uh, Rankin Technical College that was, that's, uh, right up the road here in St. Louis, and obviously that is a non-union, um, option, and, um, you know, that it's, that the union option is not the only path in St. Louis. Um, I think we all know that, uh, I support that, and I also think that, um, one thing that's going, uh, really well in this state is, uh, the Building Union Diversity Program, and, um, we, you know, a, a lot of things we, uh, like to pick on in Jefferson Study, that's, uh, one thing that's getting funded and it's growing, and it's statewide, and I think there are a lot of efforts there. Um, I know the, uh, the union question today has its champions program. Um, so, again, I know all of the, or maybe some of the new or elected officials have not been asked, but, um, there are always recruitment programs and, um, folks looking to recruit, um, a print, a potential apprentices. And, um, you know, one thing that's really important, too, um, for that path is math skills. I know that I could not get into any of the trades, I just don't have those math skills. And so, if we really want to take some of these, um, and we want to take some things seriously, just in general, that's something we need to consider on, are our schools preparing kids, um, for, uh, to be in the trades? If that's an option they want to pursue, so, it's, it's, I understand what Alderwoman is saying. I think that, um, discrimination has been real, I'm not going to sit here and deny that. Um, but I think that, um, there are also some other, I, I don't think that what is in question today is what is preventing anyone from getting an apprenticeship. This is just the code for the city and how, um, we, uh, want to ensure safety, building safety in the city. So, thank you, everyone.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman of the eleventh, seconded by the Alderwoman of the eighth, that the third read, and finally passed board bill thirty-nine as amended, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Middlebrook?
No.
Alderman Bosley?
No.
Alderwoman Evans?
No.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder? Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer? Alderwoman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel? Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Collins Mohammed? Boyd? Alderman Bakoro?
I'll pass for now.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con? Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd?
No.
Alderwoman Navarro?
Aye.
President Reed?
No.
Alderman Calder? Alderman Ballmer?
Uh, nope.
Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Peel? President, President? Thank you. Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Collins Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Bakoro?
No.
Alderman Con? Twelve, I vote. Eleven, no votes, and one voted present.
By your vote, you failed to stand the motion, Alderwoman from the eleventh, board bill thirty-nine as amended, fails.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
What a wonder, Mr. President, could you repeat the vote count?
Um, Madam Clerk, could you please repeat the vote count?
Twelve, I vote. Eleven, no votes, and one voted present.
Thank you. Alderman from nineteenth, recognized on the motion for the courtesy resolution count. The one from the nineteenth, okay, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we.
Alderman from the tenth, can you hold for a second? I do have one addition, Alderman from the twenty-second, I believe he wanted his name added to Resolution eighty-three, Madam Clerk.
So noted.
All right, Alderman from the tenth, again, you rest, recognized on the motion for the courtesy resolutions count.
I don't know if I want to do it, no. All right, I, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the courtesy of resolutions count.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertaining second on that motion.
Second.
Who is that?
Second.
Second by, uh, first and the thirteen. Any discussion? All in favor, signify, say aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. We will dispense with line item twenty and twenty-one, Miss Lyons, unfinished business.
None.
Announcements.
Friday, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, board board meeting, ten a.m., be able to have a, that is the extent of the announcements.
All right, any further announcements, Alderman from first?
Yes, Mr. President, we're gonna have a streets committee to clear out everybody's, uh, board bills that need them. Um, and we're probably gonna do two for the rest of, in the future, and I will, uh, get back with the clerk to make sure we have the, uh, we're gonna do two days, because we have business to take care of, but we got several investigations. because we have business to take care of, but we got several investigations that need to go on also. So I, I don't want to announce the days. I think it's going to be Tuesday, Tuesday and Wednesday, but I want to check with my committee first, if that's all right, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to give a little public service announcement. It's just been announced by the City Emergency Management Agency that our tornado sirens will now also sound for destructive thunderstorms, which are thunderstorms that produce winds greater than eighty miles per hour uh and/or baseball-sized hail. So if you hear that tornado siren, it doesn't necessarily mean that a tornado is on its way. It could be that there's just severely inclement weather in the storm, uh, in the, in the form of these very destructive thunderstorms. So I guess I'm on a rhyming scheme today. So uh, just a little heads up for everyone, they announced that during our meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All the, all the ones from the twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just had a quick correction for Alderman Boyd. He wanted to be added to resolution eighty-five for Dana Moore here and not resolution eighty-three.
All right, thanks. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? All right, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to excuse the alderman from the seventh ward for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion. Let's not all speak at once.
Second, second, second.
I can invite all the ones from the first, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. And with that, it takes us to the final vote for the day. Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to Friday, September twenty-fourth, ten oh one AM via webinar.
Been moved by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about all the ones from first and the Alderman from the fifth and probably Alderman from the twelfth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Stand adjourned. You all have a great week. I'll talk to you next week.